Good evening and welcome to the May 2 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. My name is Chris DeCarty, my pronouns are he/him and I am for now the Acting Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Chair Doran ended his service as Chair at the end of last month and also ended his service on the Planning Commission. So I will be chairing the meeting this evening and one of our agenda items is to elect the next Chair and Vice Chair. For those of you who are here for the first time, our Planning Commission is established according to state law. It's composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park and it's appointed, each of us appointed to four year terms by the City Council. Our Planning Commission reviews development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. And that, those two documents can be found on our city website. The Commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control variance, minor subdivision and environmental review associated with those projects. And this commission is the final decision-making body for those applications unless appealed to the City Council. The Commission also serves as a recommending body to the City Council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments and the environmental reviews and below market housing agreements associated with these projects. It's in this capacity that we will be operating on the main item in tonight's agenda. We work in close partnership and greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a Planning Commission meeting this evening, we are very glad that you are here. And we encourage your active participation, whether you're an applicant or interested member of the public. It is also my pleasure tonight to welcome two new members to the Planning Commission, appointed just last month by the City Council Commissioner Doe and Commissioner Thomas. A great welcome to you both and we look forward to you joining us immediately tonight with your points of view and perspectives. So very much welcome to the Commission. With that, let me turn to the first item on our agenda, which is roll call. I'll ask each Commissioner to unmute themselves and to verbally respond. And I will begin with Commissioner Barnes, who we believe is coming but not here yet. I'll turn to Commissioner Doe.
I'm sorry, correct me as to the correct procedure, do I just say here?
You can say hello, you can say good evening, you can say here, any of those things and that's all great.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening and welcome. I'll turn to Commissioner Harris.
I'm here, hi everyone and welcome to our new Commissioners, Thomas and Doe.
Commissioner Riggs.
Present and also welcome to our new Commissioners.
Commissioner Tate will not be with us this evening. Commissioner Thomas.
Present and thank you everyone for the warm welcome.
Great and welcome and I am here as well. So we have five of our seven Commissioners, that is a quorum. We know Commissioner Tate is not here and we expect the Commissioner Barnes will be able to join us later on. With roll call, now let me first, as I turn to reports and announcements, because we are still operating in a remote environment, it's not immediately as straightforward to members of the public and how you can participate. So I'm going to turn this to Assistant Planner Chris Turner, who is going to capably run the public comment periods for us at the various points this evening to tell you now how you can participate so you can prepare for those moments. Assistant Planner Turner, welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeCarty. Regarding the procedures for communicating tonight, Commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the Chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, if you can click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment, we will also unmute you. If multiple people are speaking from the same account tonight, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we'll make sure that each person gets a chance to speak. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We really appreciate your help on this. And with that, we turn to reports and announcements and Acting Principal Planner Corinna Sandmeyer. Ms. Sandmeyer, welcome this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. So I have an update, on May 10, the City Council will hold a study session on the Parkline project and that's the redevelopment of the SRI campus. And then I'd also like to welcome our new Commissioners, Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Doe. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions right now for Ms. Sandmeyer? Great. And for the new Commissioners, there's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting when we talk about upcoming items, if there's something on your mind you want to raise at that point as well. All right, I will close reports and announcements and now I will open up for public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject that is not listed on the agenda for this evening and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the Commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please be ready to clearly state your name and address or your political jurisdiction in which you live before making your comment. Please note, the Commission cannot act on items that are not listed on the agenda and therefore the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So with that, I will open public comment for any item that is not scheduled for regular business, consent calendar or the public hearing this evening. And again, just please raise your hand if you have an interest in the public comment.
Not seeing any hands raised at this time, but maybe if you want to give it a few seconds. As Vice Chair DeCarty noted, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or if you are calling in, click star nine.
Still nobody?
Still no hands raised.
All right, I will then close public comment. And item D on our agenda and note that on item E, the consent calendar, we have no items this evening, but I will take a moment to recognize and welcome Commissioner Barnes who has joined us. Commissioner Barnes, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
And we've also welcomed two new Commissioners, Commissioners Doe and Commissioners Thomas to the dais Commissioner Barnes who are with us now.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I was I was a panelist that was in the meeting, but I wasn't a panelist. My apologies about that. I'll get that figured out. And yes, I heard the introduction of Commissioners Thomas and Commissioner Doe, welcome. Really looking forward to working with you and thank you. Vice Chair DeCarty.
Fabulous. Okay, I will turn to item F, regular business. Under regular business, this evening we have one item, which is the selection of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. This runs from May 2022, starting now through April 2023. There is a linked staff report on this item. And the suggestion for running this item is that we will first look at the Chair. We will have a discussion and solicit nominations for the Chair. We'll then close that and turn to the Vice Chair. We'll solicit nominations, have a discussion and vote on the Vice Chair. So that'll be generally our plan. We have done this somewhat informally in the past and the Associated Staff Report lays out generally how this has been done. But we are free to nominate one or more candidates in either and then move on a vote on both of them. So that's the proposed plan. Before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to any public comment on this agenda item in general. We can then come back to any clarifying questions from Commissioners and then we'll begin with nominations for the Chair position. So with that, let me turn it over to public comment on this agenda item, which is item F1.
As a reminder, please click the raise hand icon if you have a public comment or press star nine on your phone if you're calling in. I do not see any public comment hand raised at this time.
All right, we'll give it a second. All right, still none?
Still none.
All right, I will close public comment for this item, item F1, and turn it back to the Planning Commission first for any clarifying questions from Commissioners about what we're doing this evening, either to myself or to Ms. Sandmeyer. All right, with that then, we'll first look at the Chair position. And so does anybody have any comment or want to make a nomination for Chair? I will recognize Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Vice Chair DeCarty for the position of Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Riggs.
I would like to second the nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So we have a first and a second. We can have a discussion on this item and then turn to a vote. In this discussion, if anybody would like to suggest another candidate, please feel free to raise that that person's name at that time. But let's see before we turn to the vote if there's any discussion or comment from anybody. All right, then we will turn for a vote. Again, we'll go in alphabetical order as I'm the acting Chair, I'll go last. And I will turn to Commissioner Doe. I'm sorry, I apologize. I will turn to Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
I will vote yes, sure. And the nomination is approved, six to zero with Commissioner Tate absent. Ms. Sandmeyer, have we successfully named a Chair?
Yes, that's correct.
That's terrific. To all of you, thank you. I hope I will serve in the spirit of Chairs who I've learned from before with the clarity of Chair Barnes, with the determination and thoroughness of Chair Riggs and with the often strived for, sometimes achieved efficiency of Chair Doran. And thank you all for the faith and trust and I look forward to working with each of you. My primary goal is to make sure that each of you feels that your voice is thoroughly heard on every single agenda item and that we work together to make sure that applicants and members of the public absolutely have their voice heard as well. So that's my goal and if I am ever screwing that up, please at any time tell me in public is completely fine. So with that, thank you. So let's now turn to Vice Chair. And as we turn to discussion, I will say one thing first because it came up in the staff report. The longest-serving member of the Commission who has not yet served in a Chair or Vice Chair role is Commissioner Tate. She is not with us this evening, but she did let me know that she's not interested due to time constraints in serving as Vice Chair. So I wanted to let the Commission know that that does not preclude us from nominating Commissioner Tate. But I simply wanted to relay that should we do that in absentia, that she's not here to voice that sentiment. So with that, I turn the floor over to discussion or comment. Commissioner Thomas?
Does Commissioner Harris, is Commissioner Harris interested in being the Vice Chair is my question.
Question, Commissioner Harris?
Sure, if I'm asked to serve, of course I will serve. As I, but I will spend a lot of time learning from Chair DeCarty.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or a follow-up on that Commissioner Tom, Commissioner Barnes?
So I apologize, I wasn't clear on that. Is that a nomination from Commissioner Thomas? And if it is, I'll second it. If it's not, I'll be a first to nominate Commissioner Harris for Vice Chair.
All right, Commissioner Thomas, the floor is yours.
I will second the nomination from Commissioner Barnes.
Fabulous. All right, so we have a first from Commissioner Barnes, a second from Commissioner Thomas on the nomination of Commissioner Harris for Vice Chair. Any discussion, conversation? All right, oh, go ahead. Yes, Commissioner Barnes.
I'm sorry, I wanted to, at the discretion of the Chair, after the vote, I do have one comment, but I don't want it to insert it in this particular vote. So if you'd be so kind to come back to me afterwards.
Sure, I think that seems perfectly reasonable. And Commissioner Thomas, your hand is raised. I just want to see if I want to recognize that or if you're okay. Okay, great. With that then, we have before us a first and a second for Commissioner Harris to serve as Vice Chair, again in alphabetical order. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes enthusiastically. So congratulations, Commissioner Harris. We're thrilled to have you and thank you for your service. Fabulous. So.
Thank you. I still feel like a little bit of a newbie on this, so I will be continuing to learn from all the other Commissioners.
And I think we can all say we continue to learn from each other. So that's fabulous. So before we close this item, I'll open it up for any Commissioner that wants to make a brief comment, starting with Commissioner Barnes and then I'll turn to Ms. Sandmeyer to make sure that I haven't screwed anything up and we'll go from there. So Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that, Commissioner DeCarty. What I, what I hope for, for a Chair and a Vice Chair, whomever that is, and thankfully we've got two really competent and well-respected folks that have agreed to take this on. I think that the Chair position and then the Vice Chair when the Vice Chair sits in is a unique position in that it's really delicate that the point of view of the Chair or the Vice Chair doesn't influence the, the decision-making. In other words, there is a, there's the traffic cop aspect of a Chair and a Vice Chair, which is really to run the proceedings and personal point of views step out and come in as a Commissioner as opposed to bringing forward the personal point of view in the Chair of the bully pulpit, for lack of a better term, of sitting in the Chair and Vice Chair. When I've seen this work really well, it's that ability to separate out the preference as a Commissioner versus the, some of the, the oblique powers of the Chair in order of directing how the conversation goes. It's not necessarily a sausage-making role, it's not necessarily finding agreement, it's, oh, I'm a traffic cop in this. And as a Commissioner, I have my own point of view as well. So I wish that for whomever steps in and we know who that's going to be, Commissioner DeCarty, and I think could do a wonderful job on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I think it's the excellent point. Appreciate you making that. Other comments before we close from folks? And this is not, this is not a mandatory, we should by all means move on. We've got a meaty and interesting agenda item this evening. But any last comments from folks before we proceed? Yeah, Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Barnes for that and also to say that I in this past year have been very pleased with the way that the Chair did recognize everyone's point of view, even if it was not his own. So I feel like he provided a really good example for me and I appreciate that. So, but also thank you Commissioner Barnes for that comment.
Fabulous. All right, we have successfully welcomed two new Commissioners. We have done some housekeeping. We have a sense of how we want to work together as a Commission on behalf of our city. So with that, thank you. And let me close this item on the agenda, which is item F1. We now turn to our public hearing, which is item G on our agenda. And as I do that, I promised Ms. Sandmeyer that I would pause to check with you to make sure that I hadn't messed anything up.
No, all I have to add is congratulations to new Chair DeCarty and Vice Chair Harris.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to turn to the main item tonight. On our agenda, it is items G1 and H1, which are linked and associated with a single staff report. We'll begin with item G1, which is the Draft Environmental Impact Report or Draft EIR Public Hearing for Tarleton Properties LLC regarding 1350 Adams Court in Menlo Park. Public hearing is to receive comments on the Draft EIR to develop a five-story research and development R&amp;D building with up to 26,400 square feet of gross floor area as part of the 1350 Adams Court project in the LSB Life Sciences Bonus Zoning District. The project site consists of an existing two-story approximately 188,100 square foot Life Sciences building. Addressed 1305 O'Brien Drive and an undeveloped northern portion of that site. The proposed R&amp;D building would be located on the vacant site area and the existing building would remain. Parking for the proposed new R&amp;D building would be located in a partially below-grade podium level with three additional levels of parking provided above grade and integrated into the building. The total gross floor area at the project site with the proposed and existing buildings would be approximately 448,500 square feet with a total proposed floor area ratio of approximately 92% for the site. The proposal includes in exchange for community amenities, excuse me, yes. Proposal includes a request for an increase in height and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities, apologies. The applicant is proposing payment of a community amenities in lieu fee. The project also includes upgrades of water lines beneath Adams Court along the interior of the project site and beneath O'Brien Drive from the southwest corner of the project site frontage to the intersection with Willow Road. The project also includes a hazardous materials use permit request to allow a diesel generator to operate the facilities in the event of a power outage or emergency in accordance with CEQA, the certified program level. Connect Menlo EIR served as the first tier environmental analysis. Further, the Draft EIR was prepared in compliance with the terms of the settlement agreement between the City of East Palo Alto and the City of Menlo Park. Draft EIR was prepared to address potential physical environmental effects of the proposed project in the following areas. Population and housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, operation, traffic noise, construction noise and vibration and utilities and energy. The Draft Environmental Impact Report does not identify any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts from the proposed project. The project site does not contain a toxic release site per section 6596.2 of the California Government Code. Written comments on the Draft EIR may also be submitted to Community Development Department, 701 Laurel Street, Menlo Park, no later than 5:00 PM on May 23, 2022. And with that, let me turn this over to Ms. Sandmeyer. Is that where I'm going next? Oh, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Smith, apologies.
No problem. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Congratulations to the new Chair and Vice Chair and welcome to the new Commission members. So I will begin with a brief presentation and if our staff could load that up, please. All right, so as Chair DeCarty mentioned, this is the 1350 Adams Court project. This is a Draft Environmental Impact Report Public Hearing. The recommended meeting format for this evening is first the Draft EIR Public Hearing. There will be, after following my presentation, would be recommended that there would be a presentation by the applicant, followed by a presentation by the EIR consultant and then public comments received after that, followed by Commissioner questions and comments and then closing out the Draft EIR Public Hearing. And again, this portion of the meeting format is really focused on the environmental impacts of the project and the discussion of the analyses that were performed as part of the Draft EIR. The second portion of the meeting would be a study session on the design and requested entitlements for the project. There are no actions being taken this evening, but this is an opportunity to gather public comments on the design at this point. And then any Commissioner questions that there may be on the project design and entitlements. So this map, this aerial map shows at a high level, the project location can see it is actually on one parcel. There's a building address 1305 O'Brien Drive that is south of the reddish-orange rectangle that you see there. And then the project site is currently vacant. There is some sort of parking on either side, sort of at the, the shorter ends of that rectangle. But the center portion of it is vacant and undeveloped. There's a few roads here that are highlighted. You can see Willow Road, O'Brien Drive and University Avenue are sort of the major, major roads in the vicinity. This project site is on the corner of Adams Drive, which runs sort of perpendicular to O'Brien Drive where the label is. And then Adams Court is a cul-de-sac off of Adams Drive. The project zoning is LSB, which stands for Life Sciences Bonus Level. You can see here that the surrounding properties are a mix of office, additional life science bonus level and then life science properties without the bonus level distinction. The, for properties that have that B designation, standing for bonus, they are able to develop at up to 125% floor area ratio or FAR plus an additional 10% FAR for commercial uses. They're allowed a height of, a maximum height of up to 120 feet for this particular site. And it does require the provision of a community amenity. At the base level, development in this district would be 55% FAR plus 10% additional commercial FAR. And the max height would be 45 feet and that would not require provision of a community amenity in, in exchange for the, the bonus level of fulfillment. So the meeting purpose, we described just a little bit already, but there are essentially two public meetings as part of this evening's item or items. The first is the Environmental Impact Report, which we call an EIR Public Hearing and that's an opportunity to accept comments on the Draft EIR and then the study session, which is to ask clarifying questions on the plans and design, the below-market rate housing proposal and the community amenities proposal. As I mentioned, no actions will be taken this evening. This is really an opportunity to gather public comment on the Draft EIR and there is a public comment period that we are currently sort of near the middle of, which ends May 23 of this year at 5:00 PM. sort of near the middle of, which ends May 23 of this year at 5:00 PM. And we will be accepting written comments through that date. Once we have any comments from this meeting and then any written comments that are submitted, staff and our environmental consultant will review and respond to all substantive comments in a final EIR, which would be released, and then there would be a 10-day review period for that prior to hearings on the entitlements. The Planning Commission will be the acting body on certification of a final EIR for the project and the land use entitlements. So at a later date, once the final EIR has been written and published, then we will return for those land use entitlements and certification. And that concludes my staff presentation. As recommended, we would, we would advise that you give the applicant the opportunity to present at this time so you can get a full project overview prior to diving into the details on the project EIR.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the presentation and for the guidance. I will plan to turn to the applicant. If there are any pressing questions after that for commissioners that are clarifying questions before public comment, we can do that, but we prefer to then move to public comment. And then we can come back, ask clarifying questions and go from there. So with that, let me turn to the applicant for this project. Thank you for being here and looking forward to your presentation and the discussion. Is that what I'm supposed to do? Am I supposed to do the consultant? I apologize. I just screwed that up. And is that why I've now messed people up? We're supposed to do EIR first, Mr. Smith, and then applicant first and then EIR, or EIR and then applicant. I apologize.
We would advise letting the applicant present first to get the project overview and then
And then, thank you very much. Okay, then I apologize. So to the applicant in the
So this is John Tarleton, and I'm kicking off our presentation, and I'm happy to turn on my video if the host will allow me to do so. Yeah. Good evening. Chair DeCarty and Planning Commissioners, I'm John Tarleton. And I am grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight. We are pleased to be moving this application forward with public comments to the EIR. Thank you, staff and EIR consultants, for all your hard work. In an effort to be efficient, my comments this evening will be for both agenda items. The proposed building, which received unanimously positive feedback from this body some three years ago, represents the first new public benefit or bonus level building in the Life Science District. With our help, this corner of Menlo Park has been quietly churning out world-changing life science companies for 40 years. From our first life science company, Pharmetrics, the inventor of the nicotine patch, to Billion to One, which has supplanted Amyocentesis, to Grail with a commercially available pan cancer liquid biopsy, Menlo Park Labs has helped nurture dozens and dozens of innovations, which have lowered the cost of healthcare and improved patient outcomes. In addition to these life signs, life-saving innovations, excuse me, and in addition to the more typical commercial property tax generation, Menlo Park Labs has contributed tens of millions of dollars directly to the city's general fund through business-to-business sales tax, having housed the number one and/or number two sales tax generator in the city for many of the last 35 years, and three of the top 25 sales tax generators for nearly all of the last 30 years. These benefits have been generated by uses that are substantially lower traffic impacts to similarly sized office projects due to a substantially lower employee density, approximately two employees per thousand square feet, and off-peak commute patterns for our scientists. Finally, Menlo Park Labs has been a leader in sustainable practices like switching to low-water-use landscape, executing deep energy retrofit retrofits on our buildings and implementing effective shuttle programs long before they were required. All of this has been accomplished despite lacking the kind of building we propose to build in this project, which will allow a maturing life science company to accommodate a sufficiently large number of functions under one roof with significantly more daylight, views, and other amenities. In short, this new building will allow Menlo Park to more effectively compete with other life science hubs in the Bay Area, which have been taking a high-octane tenants away from Menlo Park for years. As I have said in the past, we should stop allowing other Bay Area cities to take Menlo Park's lunch money. This application is the result of over 20 years of planning and coordination with the city. As we indicated during the comprehensive plan outreach, which took place over three years between 2013 and 2016, we intend to update our portion of the Life Science District in a measured manner. Towards that end, this was the first of three applications now into the city over the last four years, approximately one application every 16 months. We hope that you will find that the new buildings, each, are individual while maintaining a consistently high level of design and execution. This progressive update will enable us to continue delivering a unique collection of simultaneous positive benefits to the city. Public benefit dollars directed to the Bell Haven neighborhood, a large and growing sales tax revenue, higher property tax revenue, low employee density in a sustainable environment, high-quality jobs with a broad socioeconomic base, a growing collection of public art that will inspire generations of residents to greater scientific heights, a continuously growing stream of life-saving innovations. With that, I will turn over the presentation to Susan Ashweiler, an exceptionally talented architect who is uniquely qualified to help Menlo Park and Tarleton advance its Life Science District, having been an integral part of the design team for the original buildings and what was Menlo Business Park, and having since become one of the Bay Area's preeminent life science architects, not to mention a close friend of mine.
Thank you, John. That was a lovely introduction. I am honored to be able to present to you the next generation of buildings, and this is the first of them at the former Menlo Business Park, but now the Menlo Park Labs. And it is really a, a district. I'm sorry, there we go. Sorry, let me, I double-clicked, so it might be a problem. Anyway, there we go. This is the Menlo Park Labs Life Sciences District. And John mentioned that there have been several applications made. Tonight, we are talking about 1350 Adams. The other projects are shown in orange, 1125 O'Brien and 1005 and 1320 Willow. Tonight, we're talking about the 1350 Adams, but you can see that we're really creating a district. All of the Tarleton Holdings properties are in light yellow. And we have really created a place. Our project, the Life Sciences District, is all about place-making for innovative science. And this is the first building to rise out of the ground above the two-story tilt-ups that were done, that we did back in the 1980s. The site is, as, hang on. I have a little technical problem here. There we go. The Menlo Park Labs has in it the Pacific Biosciences headquarters, which is part of the front part of this project. But it also has many amenities that we've developed that are, for instance, over at 1440, we recently redeveloped this into a cafe and a conference center and a lovely fitness center with a swimming pool for all of the tenants to use. And so we're really working on creating that, the place-making for science to occur, but not just for the buildings themselves, but really thinking of it as a campus. Sorry, there's quite a bit of lag. Okay. The, the project itself is on an 11-acre property that it shares with 1305 O'Brien, which is an AIA award-winning retrofit building that was, became the headquarters for Pacific Biosciences. The, there, they have about 188,000 square feet in that building. It's two stories, and it faces O'Brien Drive. The rear portion of the site is vacant, and it faces Adams Court. The building itself, the property itself is surrounded by heritage trees, and it is Tarleton and DES's goal to retain absolutely as many of those heritage trees as possible. We are only removing a few trees where new driveways would occur coming off of Adams Court and one spare nectarine tree that must have come from a seed that someone cast away. The top part of that was four acres. And so when we first started the project, we looked at where the, where does the sun move? How does the sun move around the site? Where does the wind direction come from? And of course, how do people approach the site? And we looked at very much how do we want to develop, retain the heritage trees along the perimeter and give an array of experiences as people are arriving at the site. We wanted to bring in public art so that people could experience that and experience many open spaces and have a, create a pedestrian scale as people approach the project. The main entry comes off of Adams Court, as you can see with a black arrow. And we let the, the site, the, the building itself be sculpted by creating three modules of our 60,000-square-foot floor plates so that it really will step back from the corner that is our primary publicly, public open space and green belt with a big stand of trees. We had, we took our service zones at the rear of the project in the gray zone, and those are shared with Pacific Biosciences. And we create a circulation through the site so that people can get from Adams Court to Adams Drive through, from the, from the service zone. The, looking more closely at the site as it started to develop, the public open space occurred at the, at the corner of Adams and Adams and became really the connector, the connective tissue to get to the campus amenities building that I explained before about 1440 O'Brien Drive. That's where the camp, the blue circle at the bottom of the, of the picture is where the fitness center and the cafe and the swimming pool all are. So our gray line is the connection, the pedestrian and bicycle connection that would take us to the front door of the Adams Court project. And the public space, the publicly accessible open space wraps around the project all along O'Brien Drive, Adams, Adams Court, and then also winds down on the west side of the property along the west property line. And that will be in parallel to the future Paseo that is shown in the Connect Menlo zoning. And that Paseo will be by our neighboring property. As the site develops, you can see that now the, the floor plan, that the three modules are stepping back from the street and really giving a wide berth to the corner of Adams and Adams, where there's an existing stand of trees and a berm all the way along there, and those will all be preserved. The, the tan path is, is our path for public access, and it has artistic sculptures that we'll talk about later with the innovation scientists that are on display along those, the path. The primary entry is at the front off of Adams Court, and there's a grand stairway that comes right where you see the word Court comes down from Adams. And there's a crescent-shaped driveway to, for drop-off and arrival at the lobby space, which is in the center of the building, and a couple of visitor parking spaces and ADA parking. The primary parking is all tucked away. There's a, an underground parking, what we're calling a parking podium that goes under the entire building and a little bit under the plazas. And then there, that, in addition to that, there are three levels of parking garage tucked in where it's a little bit darker tan here. You can see on the lower left that those, there's parking, but it's all tucked in and you won't be able to see it from the street. That to access the underground parking, you can come in from Adams Drive on the right side where it says ramp down to podium parking on the right. And that leads you to the underground parking level. Or you can come on Adams Court and come in off the cul-de-sac and go down in the ramp down to podium parking. Or you can continue on further down the driveway to the, where it says upper parking entrance, and that leads you to the upper parking levels. And note, please, the heritage trees on all perimeters are being preserved only where we are taking out the new driveways at Adams Court will we lose some trees. The loading and service area is notched into the rear of the property and tucked in again so that you do not see it from the street. There will be a service yard for the emergency generator and trash enclosure all tucked into the service area. And this is where the emergency generators and transformers will be. Fire department access and public access can come through this loading area so that it's well-served and it all connects up to the 1305 O'Brien parking areas below. On the left-hand portion of the site, you can see that there's a path that winds down and that is publicly accessible pathway with some seating areas, and there will be a sculpture at the end of it. There are also biodetention areas that are, the green triangles that are occurring along the Adams Court and along in, in the development of the landscape. Okay. So this is our view from Adams Drive intersection, and you can see in this artist rendition, the modularity that we've developed in the architecture with the three large modules stepping back from the corner of the two, of the two streets. And as well, there's also modulation in the vertical height with regards to the roof screens at the roof as well as the second floor deck that occurs towards the, towards the corner. There's a, one little pop-out. There's also where you see the red umbrellas. There is a patio that is screened with aluminum panels to create that the tenants could use as, if they have a break area inside the building. All of our stairways are exposed. We want to be able to express those stairs and encourage people to take the stairs instead of the elevators. And the, the main entrance is highlighted in the center of the, of the rendering. Looking from the other direction, coming, if you were standing just at the property line, looking back at the cul-de-sac, this is how the building would step away from you as it goes forward towards, towards Adams Drive. And you can see a little bit of the ramp that goes down to the underground parking, the expression of the western stair with its glass. And in this case, you can see the three stories of parking garage towards the, toward the right of the screen with the entrance, driveway entrance into that portion with a little canopy at the, at the side. The front elevation is glass, and there are some of the garage has the perforated panels along the front. And all the, the garage is, the underground is mechanically ventilated, but the garage above ground is all open-air expression. So the front entrance is very grand because we're coming up the stairs and welcoming everyone through a portal and into a two-story lobby. The building, as John mentioned, is designed for The building, as John mentioned, is designed for um a company that is much maturing out of some of the other smaller buildings perhaps and really has growth plans. And so it's, it's five stories of um occupied uh R and D space is what is planned. The building itself is um it is made out of uh G F R C. Uh so the white and gray panels are all um a concrete look, very refined concrete look. But the portal itself is uh is a metal panel, uh kind of a charcoal gray um metal panel that creates a set of portals as we're going uh creating the entry into the building. The glass is a uh tinted blue glass except at the, at the uh, at the main entry. So here we have uh material samples. A little bit hard to see on screen rather than wish we were there in real life that could um show them to you in real life, but this is a tinted blue uh gla- glazing and that is the same kind of uh blue glazing glass similar to what was used in the Pacific Bioscientists Building at the rear of the property so that everything works in concert. The uh will have a clear glass which looks kind of gray green when you put it against a whiteboard, but it's a clear glass at the entry. And our glass all has um accepted the, at the primary entrance spots um where it is clear. Most of the bir- the glass is bird safe glass throughout. At the garage, we have um along Adams Drive and the side, we're using a perforated metal panel um that has a gridded look. And then at the rear of the property, we have a wire mesh just for security. Here are the sample colors of the G F R C that would be the primary panels of the building in eggshell color, um a light gray color that is the um underside at that runs along the underside of the glazing itself. And then at the corners where we're really accentuating the modulation and the stepping back and um have full height glass at the corners, we're using a darker um accent medium gray um uh band around those corners. The metal itself, it uh the portal we mentioned is kind of a charcoal gray. We're using a lighter metal at the stairways that is similar in color to the aluminum mullions. And um as you also mentioned that we have sun shades um along the rear portion on the south side of the building. At the patio space, we're using a BAC laser cut uh panels to um define that uh space as being part of the private space rather than the publicly open space and that has um has a, a wavy, very natural um lens uh pattern to complement the landscape. The roof screen itself is a corrugated metal um and will be complementary gray. So let's talk a bit about the um this sustainable design features. Um we have uh, in this case, we're going for gold. Um we're going for lead four point one gold equivalent target. We are uh, we've planned um to use dual plumbing in preparation for municipal recycled water. Um it's not yet available at the site, but we're planning that someday it will be. Um for our, for Charlton's project, they're uh committed to buying a hundred percent renewable electricity from our Peninsula Clean Energy Group um plus purchasing carbon offsets. And we will be doing um onsite solar power generation at the rooftop to um be consistent with the city's reach code. Our, if our landscape is all designed to be water efficient, um we low compliant and low water use. And in fact, we've reduced our water budget by um thirty five percent through uh through the design of our landscape irrigation systems as well as the mechanical systems on the roof. We have, we'll have some cooling towers and we worked very hard to um to make sure that they were uh, we were able to reduce the um the, the use of water in those cooling towers so that we achieve that water budget reduction. And one of the really um great things is that we have, we will have uh planned um seventy two charging E V stations with thirty six future for a total of a hundred and eight um E V parking spaces, which is total of fifteen percent of all of the parking on the site. Um now talking about the public open space, we created this diagram to um to, to show our compliance with the requirements. And in fact, we exceed the requirement. So the um, the private open space is the light green area and that's ten percent of the site. And those are the site, that's the portion of the, the building that's really closest to the front of the building itself. The public open space is the darker green and that, as we've described, is really shown along the um along the public way of O'Brien Drive, Adams Drive and um of the at primarily at the corner of Adams and Adams. That's where you get the really large piece of it, but also um complimenting the twenty foot Paseo that would be um prepared by their, by our neighbor to the west, that we would have um a publicly open space path and a sculpture um on that. In this case, the red dots are indicative of um of scientist sculptures that will be done by our renowned um artist Gordon Huether. And he will speak a little bit later in detail about those. The uh public open space requirement is um and ten percent of the site and we exceed that. But in addition, one of the things that's unique about this site is that beyond the property line, there is additional open space. And we are committing to doing a public sidewalk that is within the Adams Drive uh right of way. So the light blue is additional public open space. And so that gives us another twenty three thousand square feet. That's another half acre of public open space. So we exceed this by um, we probably have about twenty three or twenty four percent of the total site area in open space. And how does this look when it gets developed um in, in green space? What does this mean? Um that we have the really nice gathering space at the corner of Adams Court and Adams Drive at the top there with meandering paths and um public seating areas integrated into that pedestrian walkway. We have our Innovation Science Walk, um which really um creates a lovely path for people to explore as they wander from um either O'Brien Drive up Adams uh Drive around to the Adams Court corner or um in reverse. And um it's our hope that we would have uh the people exploring and looking at the individual sculptures and learning all about um the past innovators of science. So along in this green space, we would have two pathways. One is the public sidewalk that I just mentioned in Adams Drive and the other is the meandering innovator art walk. And on the western property, we are continuing that path with a publicly accessible open pedestrian way and a scientist sculpture at the terminus of that. The um, so what is the section, cross section of that? You can see in the upper right, there's a little key plan with an arrow um pointing where, where we've taken a section through the eastern property line where through the building and what is that relationship to the street at Adams Drive? So um in Adams Drive, starting on the right hand side, you can see that we would have a five foot wide bike lane. There's also a two foot buffer between the eleven foot wide um uh drive lane and the new bike lane. And then we would have a five foot six sidewalk within that right of way. And that's a pretty standard um a flat sidewalk with curb. Uh then up beyond that rises a berm and that's an existing berm with the heritage trees. And that's all to be preserved. There's a low wall there that will be um removed um just so it'll be natural landscape. You won't have any um uh segregation from the street to the property. So it'll be nice and open. And then coming down the berm, you can see then um there's a, in this picture, a woman with a small child walking on the Innovation Science Walk and that's the meandering path on site. And there will be um uh public seating along the way. Um we'll have our newer trees, our younger trees are going to be planted um uh after we do that installation of the sidewalk. And those trees have silver cells and um to uh help with the stormwater management. Then you can see the underground parking podium uh and the land, there will be landscape brought up on top of that until you get over to the building itself. The building is set, the finished floor of the buildings is set at one uh one fourteen, which is three feet above the uh base flood elevation. So we are in good shape there and the parking podium down below will be protected with um flip up gates um at the two, at the two ramps that I showed you earlier in the, in the site plan. Sorry. So there's such a lag here. Okay, on the eastern side, if we take that same cross section on the western side, um this, we see that the building on the right and then um adjacent to the building is a flow-through planter for part of a stormwater management plan. Then we have the driveway, a small retaining wall. And then in this case, we're working with an existing property line and an existing fence. Um the fence may be removed over time. But um the key thing that we have to be working with is that there's an existing forty eight inch storm drain and a ten inch water main, but water mains due to be replaced, as you heard earlier from Tom's report, that that would be replaced with a twelve inch water main. Um but this is um, we're using uh, there's a public utility easement for these uh for these uh pipes that are underneath there. And um this will become our publicly accessible open space on the western side. And there again, we would have the pathway and the seating and new landscape along the way, but preserving um any trees that are along that property line. The landscape itself, um well, we are using uh very nice uh furnishings, very durable furnishings so that um people can feel very comfortable um at seating and there's, there are lots of opportunities for seating and seeing the, the various sculptures. We'll be putting in um different kinds of uh concrete paving and um and lighting along the uh, the railings at the entryway into the lobby. And bicycle racks, of course. We have multiple bicycle racks at the lobby. There are also within the parking garage, there are two um lockable bike rooms um for bicycle parking. Very dear to John's heart. So this is a more detailed plan. I think you have it in your um planning packet. Um well, actually you have it as a link to your planning packet. Um but that shows uh the, the, some of the details of the uh, of the landscaping. Uh and you can see more closely here the, the meandering paths on the right side at the public open space. Um the existing trees shown in the darker color along the uh, the property line and some newer trees in the, in the lighter color on the left side of that meandering path. We have the uh, the decorative fence around the patio and that links up to the second floor um deck up above. We have uh mounds, we have uh just a really a nice variety and array of different kinds of spaces and experiences where you can walk on the public straight sidewalk, you can walk through the meandering sidewalk. We have landscaping that um is, as I mentioned, low water use. We have our new trees would be Chinese pistachio, Western red bud, red bud. And assembly, assemblage of shrubs and grasses. We have flow-through planters. We have biodetention areas. We have um public sidewalk and of course, the um, the sculptures. Whoops, going the wrong way. Um so talking about um transportation demand management now, I mentioned that we have um onsite bicycle storage. We have two rooms for that and the twelve short term spaces near the lobby entrance for a total of sixty bicycles. We have um it planned for in the core restroom cores of the, of the floors, we would uh plan for showers and changing rooms and those would be built out at the time of future tenant improvements. Uh as you know, we have an on-campus restaurant and fitness center down at fourteen forty O'Brien. And um Charlton's have done a wonderful job of creating what we call Menlo Park rides um where we have free campus-wide bike share for all the tenants so they can zip around the campus particularly if they're in different buildings. Um they can um it go from one building to another or to the amenities uh center. We have uh, they have an enterprise car share for qualified tenants and um you heard me mention that we'll have seventy two E V stations and thirty six pre-wired in this building. So that's a hundred and eight E V stations. But they already have a hundred and over a hundred and fifty charging stations located throughout the campus. So leading there again, leading the charge in um electrical vehicle um charging ability. And um one of the unique things that Charlton started many years ago was the shuttle service to and from public transportation hubs such as Union City, Fremont and Bart, um the Palo Alto Caltrain, the Millbrae Caltrain and um a couple of locations in San Francisco depending upon what works for the tenants. So back to this diagram, we have um this one uh really was uh where we were showing the um the conceptual places of the publicly accessible open space. And you start to see uh now the red dots we've added where the sculptures will be of the uh innovative scientists. And uh we're creating history here. So I'd like to introduce now Gordon Huether, who is our world renowned artist uh who will now speak about the Innovative Science Art Walk and the sculptures that will be added to make this just a really fun place to visit. Gordon?
Run on Susan. Thank you. Um good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gordon Huether and I'm not sure how renowned I are, I am, but I've been around a long time. I'm up here in Napa. Um we're incidentally, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission here in the city. So um I feel you. I know I know these evenings that you get up to look at these things, but it's really important work that you do and I like to think that we do up here. Um my mission in life is to inspire the spirit of humanity by bringing beauty and meaning into the world through art. And um we have big plans. We being, I'm part of Team Charlton, have been for several years now and we're um very excited about this project and other projects that will be coming before you um in the near future, I hope. I don't know, do I control the, I don't.
I do. Uh yeah, I'm pushing.
Pushing. Okay, let's push it. Let's go. Um. So what I, basically the short version, if I caught you, if you caught me in, in an elevator or in the stairwell at this parking garage in Morgan Hill and you asked you what I did for a living, I would share with you that I uh specialize in large scale site-specific, permanent art installations in uh universities, libraries, airports, um all kinds of crazy places all across the country. We probably have twenty five, thirty projects in eight states right now. And you know, the objectives of this art and for, actually for most projects, except for the science part here, but we really want to inspire people that are um in Menlo Labs. We want to create this um destination where we can not just inspire but educate. We want to celebrate science. We want to create a destination and a sense of place. And we're going to create conversation and I'll get into that in, in another moment. So if we go to the next um slide, please. So the inspiration is live sciences. Um I'm, you're probably wondering what that dog has to do with it, but um that is at a um animal shelter um that we recently installed. But in any event, innovation, discovery, human achievement. It's just so awesome to, to be inspired from the past to help us see the future. And we want to bring landscape, architecture and art together in a beautiful, holistic, um inspiring way. We really believe that um public art is important because it brings a layer of education, inspiration and an important layer of humanity. Um and it's also becomes a really important um public amenity. Let's go on to the next one, please. So we're really thought hard and long and you know, we're open for collaboration, but these are the um innovators from the past that we've selected that we're going to make into I'm, I'm gonna say live size, but they're actually gonna be about twenty five percent larger. I'm, I'm going to say life size, but they're actually going to be about twenty five percent larger than life. And so we're going to, and you know, some of these. Innovators from the past are not very well documented, so we're going to be using digital. Technology to create them in three dimension and have them cut. With a special machine that's on a router kind of thing. It's pretty amazing technology that we've used. Recently in the recent past, let's go to the next one, please. So we're going to take these figures and these are just placeholders, but you can get a sense of the size, right? So they're larger than life. Each one will have a kiosk that you can see in front of the gentleman, the young man with the red T-shirt. So there'll be a narrative about that innovator. There'll be a QR code that will take you to. A website that you can learn more about that particular. Innovator, all of that still is to be designed, but we've worked for several years on this project in terms of. Identifying perfect spots. We were out there with the whole team practicing different poses and. You know, since these innovators can't talk to you. They're going to be at least having nonverbal communication. So the, the gesture, the pose. Is going to be super important. Can we go to the next frame, please? There on the bottom left, you can see what Susan was talking about, the kind of air, public. Seating area. So there's an innovator there. So basically we're going to, you'll see we have a. An animation to share with you that better understand how these innovators get you from Adams Court all the way down Adams Drive. All the way to O'Brien. Can we go to the next frame, please?
Think that's it for our frames.
Okay, sorry. So I, I, at some point you might, you might have some questions about the art, which I'm very. Happy to answer, but we're very excited to be a part of the team and we just think that. The art coming together with the landscape, with the architecture, we're really creating a, a destination. Our hope is that we can recruit the students vis a vis through the teachers at Bell Haven to bring these kids over with. I don't know that they have to be yellow school buses, but that's what I wrote in. These school buses and bring these kids there and it's an opportunity to educate these, these high school students. Junior high school students see that there are heroes in the past that were innovators. And maybe one of them or two of them amongst them will be a future innovator or maybe an artist even. So that's what I have to share and there's a animation, as I mentioned, and once we look at that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So to the whoever, to the clerk who is controlling this, can you please? Load up our animation. It's just a brief minute or so. So this is starting at fourteen forty O'Brien where the, the central cafe is. And then the first sculpture is there, then we walk across O'Brien Drive. And this is at the corner of O'Brien and Adams, and you can see now the public sidewalk along the street. And the meandering innovation art walk. That we will tour you along. It's a little, then we have some public seating areas. And we'll have the, the sculptures that you'll discover. So there's really a storyline as you proceed along the pathway. As you get to the corner of Adams and Adams, there are seating areas and, and some additional sculptures. And then as you wind around to the front of the building, another sculpture, another path up to the main entrance of the building. Thank you. Thank you very much Commissioners for listening to our story about the building that we love so much. We can't wait to get building.
Thank you, Susan. We're looking forward to moving ahead with this first project in the LS district. As Susan said. We know the focus of this meeting is primarily on the EIR project. And that questions may be better directed to. EIR consultants, however, I'm available for any questions. You may have, as, as is our design team.
Fabulous. Thank you, Mr. Tarleton, Ms. Eschweiler, Mr. Huether for your presentation. We will have an opportunity and thank you for that transition, Mr. Charlton. We will have an opportunity. In the next portion to look at and ask more questions about all of the aspects of the project. But this is the first part, which is the environmental impact review. So with that is the overview. Just to breadcrumb this, we are now turning to our consultant and I believe. From ICF will do that and then come for any quick clarifying questions. We'll go to public comment and then Commissioner discussion. And I apologize, is it Ms. Mickelson? Is that how I pronounce your name?
Yeah, that's it.
Terrific. Thank you for being here and the floor is yours.
Great. I think we have a presentation, so if the clerks could load that, I will kick us off. And while we're loading the Sequa presentation. I will say unfortunately, Sequa is nowhere near as exciting as design and architecture. That's a tough act to follow. Really impressive stuff, but it is nonetheless the reason that we're here tonight. So I will give everyone just a quick walkthrough of. The basics of Sequa and the findings of our EIR analysis.
And Chair DeCarty, if I may. We're loading that presentation, taking us just a couple of seconds longer. So we appreciate everybody's patience.
No worries. Just as another reminder and a thank you to staff and to. Folks presenting, this is not an ideal environment and we appreciate all you have done to try to navigate through that on our behalf. So thank you.
Okay, I see the slides. Do I have control of the presentation?
Yes, if you push the arrows on your computer, not, don't use your mouse.
Yes, if you use the navigation arrows on your keyboard, that's generally easier, but you should have control of use of the mouse as well if you want to enter into the. The full screen presentation.
And you go to view to do that. There we go. No. How? Okay, I think I did it. Great. All right. Well, I'm Heidi Mickelson. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners and members of the public. I'm Heidi Mickelson from ICF. We are the city's Sequa Consultants. We led the preparation of the EIR. I am the Project Director of the EIR. Also with us tonight is Devon Atterbury from ICF, who is the Project Manager for the EIR. We also. Sorry, I didn't want to get too far ahead there. Um, this is fine. Okay. Sorry, the slide advanced. I don't think I touched anything, but. We have Devon Atterbury, who's the Project Manager of the EIR with ICF. We also have the Traffic Consultant. Ling Jen and Gary Black from Hexagon, who prepared the transportation part of the analysis. As well as our consultant who prepared the housing needs assessment, which is the basis of the EIR's population and housing analysis. So just to give you a quick walkthrough of what I will be discussing tonight. I will give you an overview of the general purpose of the hearing, of course focusing on the Sequa. Really brief project overview, because I think that's been quite thoroughly covered already. Also walk you through the environmental review process, give you an overview of the draft EIR. And the impact conclusions in the EIR. We'll talk about the next steps in the Sequa process and finally how to comment on the EIR. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to summarize the proposed project and the conclusions on the draft EIR. Provide an overview of the Sequa process, the next steps, receive public input on the analysis that is presented in the EIR. As folks previously mentioned, there will be a public comment period as well as an opportunity for the Commissioners to provide their questions and comments. And to discuss the next steps in the Sequa process. So a really quick overview of the project. Again, I think this has been quite thoroughly covered already. The project proposes the construction of an approximately two hundred and fifty five thousand square foot like sciences building. With a max height of ninety two feet and approximately seven hundred and six parking spaces as well as a. Series of connected private and public open spaces. I think the only feature here that really wasn't covered previously tonight is that the project is estimated to generate approximately six hundred and fifty employees. And this was one of the assumptions that we used in the EIR analysis. The EIR was prepared in accordance with Sequa for the California Environmental Quality Act. The primary purpose, purposes of Sequa are twofold. First, it provides agency decision makers and the public with information about significant environmental effects of a project. And it also identifies potential feasible mitigation measures and alternatives that would reduce those significant effects. Under Sequa, the focus of an EIR analysis is on the physical impacts on the environment. So while there are certainly other issues. That are relevant to a project, including social impacts and economic impacts, for example. Those are not under the purview of Sequa and are not covered under an EIR. But those are still considerations that agency decision makers will look at when ultimately deciding whether or not to. Recommend approval of a project in the case of Planning Commission and approve a project. So where we are in the Sequa process, I'll kind of start with where we started and where we are now. The EIR process kicked off with the issuance of the NOP or the Notice of Preparation. This was in December of twenty eighteen. And the notice for preparation essentially informs alerts the members of the public. Stakeholders and other public agencies with jurisdiction over resources that could be affected by the project. That a project is being proposed and an EIR is prepared. With the initial study or with the NOP was an initial study, which is essentially a checklist style analysis that goes through. All of the environmental impact categories in appendix G of the Sequa checklist. And does an analysis and essentially determines. What topics should be evaluated in the EIR. So that was included with the NOP. The public had a thirty day opportunity. To, and, and the public agencies had a thirty day opportunity to review that NOP. And essentially provide their comments on what they wanted to see evaluated in the EIR. And this process of releasing the NOP and also holding a scoping meeting is what Sequa refers to as scoping. It is essentially gathering information from. Stakeholders, public agencies and the public on what the focus of the EIR should be. And a scoping meeting was held during the NOP review period in January of twenty nineteen. Following the scoping process, the lead agency reviewed the scoping comments and prepared the draft EIR analysis. The draft EIR was released for a forty five day public review period on April fourth. That public review period closes on May twenty third, so that will be the final day to provide comments. And I will talk at the end of my presentation on how exactly that's done. Now, tonight, we're at the public hearing where we receive comments on the draft EIR analysis. And we'll talk about these final two next steps later on in the process. Now this EIR is what we call a focused EIR. It evaluates. A subset of topics under the appendix G checklist. The project is within the Connect Menlo Study area and it's consistent with the type and density of development. Envisioned in Connect Menlo. So the EIR is tiers from that EIR and it's what we call a focused tiered EIR. The concept of tiering refers to the coverage of general environmental matters in a broad program level EIR. With a focused environmental document prepared for a subsequent individual project under that broader program. The Sequa guidelines encourage this type of analysis that is using tiered environmental documents to. Reduce delays and excessive paperwork. That's language from Sequa back when we used to write things on paper. But the, the general concept holds true that this process of tiering generally eliminates repetitive analysis of issues that have already been. Adequately addressed in a prior EIR. And it allows you to simply reference those analysis. And focus your analysis on any new significant impacts. Or issues that are unique to the individual project that is under consideration. Sequa refers to these as issues that are ripe for discussion. So that's what we've done here. The focused EIR, of course, identifies the potential physical environmental impacts of the project. Focusing on significant effects that have not been already covered essentially under the Connect Menlo EIR. And it recommends ways to reduce those significant impacts in the form of both mitigation measures and alternatives. The issues that are studied in the CIR include air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, transportation. Utilities and energy and also population and housing, which is, I apologize, it's not on the slide, but is a section in the EIR. And then of course, alternatives. The EIR analysis found that the following impacts would be less than significant with the implementation of mitigation measures. Which are outlined in the EIR and will be incorporated into what is called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Which the city will then use if the project is approved to enforce and monitor the mitigation measures that are prescribed in the EIR. And this includes impacts related to transportation, specifically vehicle miles traveled, air quality. Greenhouse gas emissions and noise. And I will say that all of the significant impacts that were identified in the EIR that would be less than significant with mitigation. Were related to construction impacts with the exception of the VMT impact, the air quality. GHG and noise impacts were all related to project construction. Impacts on population and housing and utilities and energy were found to be less than significant. And for this EIR, no significant and unavoidable impacts were identified. So everything. Was mitigated to a less than significant level, either through the implementation of applicable mitigation measures in the Connect Menlo EIR. Or new project specific measures. So the EIR, even though there were no significant and unavoidable impacts. That resulted from the analysis, you're still required under Sequa to look at project alternatives. To see if there are other ways to reduce or avoid the significant impacts even further. So the CIR included an alternative analysis that evaluated three different alternatives. The first is the no project alternative, which is essentially maintaining status quo. Nothing happens at the project site. That's required under Sequa. The second was the base level alternative, which assumes an FAR reduction. From approximately ninety point seven percent under the project to fifty five percent. And the third was a mixed use alternative that contemplated some ground floor commercial space. The environmentally superior alternative, which is a designation that you are required to make under Sequa. Was determined to be the base level alternative. So of all the alternatives, that alternative had. The lowest level of impact. So going back to our chart of the steps in the Sequa process. After tonight's public hearing and the close of the draft EIR public review period. Will prepare the final EIR and the final EIR will include responses to the comments that we received tonight from the public. As well as any additional written comments that we receive. Throughout the draft EIR review period. If those comments result in changes to the draft EIR, those changes will also be made and. those changes will also be made and incorporated into the final EIR. And as long as those changes are minor in nature and are essentially clarifying the analysis or expanding on the analysis, then those changes are permitted under SEQA. If any comments result in changes that constitute substantial new information, then recirculation of the draft EIR is required. And then after preparation of the final EIR, the city will take action on the project and the EIR and will be asked to approve the project and certify the EIR. So I believe this is my final slide of the evening and this is the most important slide. How do we comment on the draft EIR? The reason that we are here tonight is to receive comments from the public and the commissioners on the draft EIR. If you would like to submit comments, you can email them to Tom Smith. His email address is here. You can also send a letter to Tom at the address shown here. And you can also comment tonight by raising your hand on Zoom and you'll be asked to or you'll be notified when it's your turn to speak. And just a friendly reminder here that all comments must be received by May 23rd at 5:00 PM. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mickelson. Thank you for your clear presentation and really appreciate that. So we are at the portion of the program where we're going to turn to public comment. So for those of you who are interested, you can start considering your comments and raising your hand. Before we do that, I do, if there is any commissioner that has a pressing clarifying question, then we can get to it. I I think we could do public comment and still get to the same pressing clarifying questions as well, however, if that's okay with our commissioners. All right. Thank you to my fellow commissioners on that. And so with that, we will turn over to public comment. Again, for folks who wish to comment tonight, there will be two portions of public comment. This is the one that will be most directly related to Ms. Mickelson's presentation and aspects around the environmental impact report. Once we close the feedback on the environmental impact report, we'll be able to talk more generally about the project. Then I go back to the previous presentation from the three parties from the applicant team. So with that, let's open it up for public comment, Mr. Turner.
Yes, hello. Just as a reminder, if you would like to give public comment on this portion of the hearing tonight, please press the hand raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you are calling in, star nine will raise your hand on Zoom and let us know you have a comment. I do see a hand at this time. So I will introduce Pam Jones. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name and address, name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live or your organization organizational affiliation. If you have multiple speakers on your account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. And Pam, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Pam Jones, resident of Menlo Park in District One. And I'd like to thank the commissioners for your work and congratulations to our new chair as well as the vice chair. I basically have one, well, two comments. One, how accurate is the air quality data? Since we have had pandemic traffic for the last year in a couple of months. That's number one. And then number two, has there been any concern about liquefaction? Which is something that is not in the general plan, the 2016 EIR, but it has since then, it has become an issue and it's one in which East Palo Alto is addressing now with some of their projects that are moving closer and closer to the Bay. Although you aren't that close to the Bay, certainly the continuation of these large massive buildings can pose a problem, especially if we haven't even studied that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any other hands, Mr. Turner?
Not seeing any other hands at this time. Just as a reminder, if you would like to give public comment, please click the hand raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
All right. Yes, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, I just like to point out to the public who may be viewing this. If you haven't had a chance to review the EIR yet, if staff might want to explain where they can find it on the city website and and direct people to where in the website they can find the EIR to look at it and that the city will be receiving written comments through the comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. From the Mr. Turner, if you want to, or Mr. Smith, you want to respond to that?
Yes, the the EIR can be found on the city's website at menlopark.org slash 1350 Adams Court, all one word. And it is under the environmental documents section on that webpage, pretty prominently posted so that the public can review and comment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. With that, Mr. Turner, any hands or?
Still no hands.
And I think we'll go ahead and close public comment on the EIR portion of the program. And with that, I will bring it back to the dais for commissioners for any questions of the EIR consultant, the applicant or of staff. All certainly in that purview for you. Any comments you would like to make to our new commissioners, you are more than welcome to speak more than once during this session in that mix. And so you can ask or reflect until you've exhausted the comments or questions you have. And with that, any commissioners that would like to start, I will recognize Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Sir, if I missed this, is this specific to the EIR and we're going to have our general project comments after?
Yes, that's correct. This is for the EIR specifically. Then we'll come back and we'll open up for any further comment from the applicant, although I believe we were told the applicant was going to make that presentation be the total presentation. We'll give the applicant the opportunity though for any further presentation, open up public comment and then for the full project.
Got it. Thank you. I do not at this time have anything on the EIR. Thank you.
Okay. I'll recognize Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. So I have just a couple of questions that are truly focused on the AIR. But I would also like to just prompt a response to Ms. Jones' question regarding air quality data. Through the chair, could the consultant just frame how air quality data would or would not be related to any information gathering over the last two to three years?
Yeah, I can tackle that. This is Heidi Mickelson from ICS and I'll also call on our colleagues at Hexagon to help me out here. But we absolutely recognize that traffic patterns were not what they normally are during the time that this analysis was conducted and there are industry recognized techniques that we've been applying to SEQA analyses that are done during this period to essentially adjust for those baseline traffic counts. And those can vary by project. They can include anything from applying adjustment factors to using counts that were pre-COVID to evaluate traffic baseline levels, which of course feed into their quality analysis. So if either Ling or Gary could comment on the specific methodology that was used for this transportation analysis, that would be helpful.
Thanks, Heidi. Gary Black here with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. And you're exactly correct that all the data, the transportation data for this project is all based on pre-COVID conditions.
Thank you. And then just to clarify, Ms. Jones' comment was specifically on air quality, which frequently in an EIR has to do with construction activities. Or alternatively, it has to do with the particular mechanical systems. Do we want to clarify which we are addressing here?
We looked at all of the above there. So with when with respect to construction emissions, those were evaluated based on construction equipment and vehicle estimates provided by the applicant. So those are, of course, are not affected by COVID conditions. Those are just the estimates that they that they provide us in terms of how many workers will be on site, what types of equipment they'll be using, what the phasing looks like, those sorts of things. And we evaluate those impacts against daily emission thresholds that are promulgated by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to determine whether there's an impact there. For mechanical equipment, that is factored into the operational impact, the air quality impact analysis in the EIR. So we look at potential health hazards from things like generators as well as construction diesel particulate matter as well. So really, the only air quality analysis that I think that is affected by COVID is the transportation analysis. To the extent that baseline traffic levels might be different and as Gary described, those were essentially corrected for in the transportation analysis, which what which is what provides the data that feeds into their quality analysis.
Thank you for the clarity of your responses. We don't always get that. So I do mean, thank you. And then Ms. Jones also asked about liquefaction and if I may be so bold, as the token architect on the commission, just to reassure the public that liquefaction has been, I dare say for decades, a a factor that is very determinedly examined during the building application process, which is the right place because foundation designs do respond to soil conditions. And certainly in the Bay Area, liquefaction is taken very seriously. It was even before 1989, but certainly since. If anything, at the risk of overbuilding, if there is such a thing. At least that's an architect's perspective. And then my own question has to do with how we, whether it's the commission or the public ultimately decision makers, including the commission and possibly council. How do we frame the relationship between this focused EIR and the underlying Connect Menlo EIR? When it comes to a determination of no significant impacts. And I ask, for example, when the public views our discussion on buildings in this zone, not just the LS zone, but the OB and the MU as well. They see projects that are 100,000 square feet, 200,000, 500,000, maybe 1.3 million square feet. The idea that there are no significant environmental impacts would not fly with anyone observing our meeting or reading this document. So am I correct that the reason that the focused EIR can say that there are no significant impacts is that there are no impacts that have not already been evaluated under the Connect Menlo process?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assumption. Essentially what we're saying is there are no new significant and unavoidable impacts that are unique to this project or are more severe than those that were already evaluated in Connect Menlo and which the city already overrode from a SEQA perspective in the statement of overriding considerations for that EIR. So essentially, you know, you've already done your homework, your SEQA homework for the development that is contemplated under Connect Menlo. And you have adopted a statement of overriding considerations for that analysis. So when you are doing subsequent SEQA documents under that EIR, you're really focusing on whether or not there is new information.
And and that makes sense to me. But I I could see how that could easily be obscured to the public. And I'll pause a moment because I see Mr. Schaefer might want to add a comment through the chair.
I'd just like to add that the where the EIR identifies both the IRs, the Connect Menlo and the project EIR. They do identify potential significant impacts, but then recommend a slate of mitigation measures which the EIR consultant in the city conclude are sufficient to reduce the mitigation, the impact and very robust packages of mitigation measures. And opinions can differ as to how low an impact can be, should be reduced before it's deemed less than significant. And that's always a debate in SEQA, but this conclusion is supported by the mitigations that are identified, leaving no significant unavoidable impacts that still would be considered significant despite all the mitigation thrown at it.
Mr. Schaefer, I think you're quite correct because where even a relatively tame project is going to add a population of another 650 workers, something like 80% of which live outside the area. There will be impacts as anyone who's been on Bay Shore Expressway knows. So, Mr. Chair, I do have maybe four other points, but they are not directly addressed to this focused EIR, but rather how the project does or does not actually affect the shall we say, quality of life of the residents. So I'm suspecting that I should hold those until we get to architectural review.
I appreciate your point, Commissioner Riggs. I I think you can use your judgment, but certainly, you know, raise them during architectural review as well. I'm sure quality of life questions will come up then as well as focused on the AR. But I I encourage you to use your judgment. If you'd like to continue, please do. Otherwise, please hold.
Well, in that case, well, I think I would like to hold just to help the the public, if if not even myself, separate the discussion with the EIR consultant from that with the project sponsor.
Okay, very well. And after other commissioners have spoken, of course, you can always speak again if so moved. So other commissioners who would like to speak? I'm going to recognize Commissioner Thomas and I realize that Commissioner Riggs, you mentioned that you're the token architect, which I I believe you have been for a while. I'm not completely familiar with the full bios of Commissioners Doe and Thomas, so you should you should correct us. But I believe Commissioner Doe is an architect, so you may at least have another architect on the commission at this point, Commissioner Riggs. With that, I will pass it over to Commissioner Thomas and please correct me as well if you have that in your background.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. My background isn't in architecture. And my question is on the impacts. So it seems like, you know, there were some potentially significant impacts, but they've been all reduced to less than significant with mitigations. There are a couple of these on here, so I was wondering if there is one in particular, I guess my question. There are a couple of these on here, so I was wondering if there is one in particular. I guess my question would be directed towards Heidi Mickelson. Is there one of these LTS slash AM, you know, less than significant with mitigation impacts that is particularly risky or that you think if you had to rank these would potentially be of the most concern?
I've never had that question before. You know, I I don't think I could rank them under Sequo. We are required to look at everything with a fresh lens. And we look at each impact against a threshold of significance, which is another requirement of Sequa, and those thresholds can be different depending on what the impact is. For air quality impacts, for example, we often have bright line, you know, thresholds, like a project can emit 55 pounds per day of NOx, and if it's anything over that, it's a significant impact. For other impacts, it's a bit more of a qualitative threshold, and it's a judgment call on the part of the EIR professional and the city planning department in determining whether or not that impact is tripped. So from my personal perspective, all impacts on the environment are of equal importance and concern. I definitely know that when it comes to issues that are important to the public or quality of life issues, as Commissioner Riggs, you know, touched upon, different impacts, I think, can be can be different, given different weight, essentially. But from a Sequo perspective, a significant impact is a significant impact. And if it's significant, the city is required to override that impact, make a determination and override that impact. Does that answer your question? I hope it kind of answers your question.
Other commissioners' questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Harris? Excuse me, Vice Chair Harris.
Thank you. To get used to that. Yeah, I had a couple of EIR comments and questions. Like Commissioner Riggs, it is, I think, difficult to tease out, which is a comment on or question on the project versus on the EIR. And so I had some questions around transportation. And so some of those have to do with, I just want to understand the total number of employees and the total number of parking spots. I got a little bit confused because I understand that we're adding 650 employees, but I don't know what the total is with those 650. And I also was a little bit unsure about the total number of parking spots because in in the in in reviewing the staff report, I saw that it was 961, but in the EIR, it says 707. And I'm wondering if the difference is that the 961 includes both 1305 as well as 1350. I also read that 118 that were that for 1305 will be taken away because they were, I guess, surface parking that is now on 1350. Anyway, that all, the EIR and the staff report seem a little bit different, and I'm wondering if somebody from either staff or from the I'm not I'm not sure which which group could could help me understand those answers. Both employees and parking.
I think I can I can at least get things rolling there and explain the parking situation. So it's important to think of this as although there is one new building being built, it is a project site that contains an existing building, and I think you have it right, Vice Chair Harris, that there are 118 spaces that are currently provided on what would become the 1350 Adams Court site that are currently used for 1305 O'Brien, the existing building. Those would obviously need to be removed to add the new building, the landscaping, all of that. And so those 118 spaces, because there was an approval for 1305 O'Brien Drive, that required, I believe, it's 373 spaces were required as part of 1305 O'Brien Drive. So the 118 spaces that are being removed to develop the new building would need to be reintegrated into the parking structure for the proposed building. So what we would end up with is 961 spaces total for both buildings on the site. Of the 706 spaces that would be part of the 1350 Adams Court project, you can think of 118 of those as belonging to 1305 O'Brien Drive. So what you end up with is essentially of the new parking spaces that are being developed in the garage or there's a few surface spaces as well as part of the 1350 Adams Court project. You're looking at 588 new spaces for the proposed building itself, which is a parking ratio of about 2.14 per thousand square feet. So 588 spaces would be, it's kind of about halfway in the ratio of 1.5 to 2.5 spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area that's required in this district.
Okay, that's really helpful. So but I should think about it as 588 new spaces for the new 650 employees. Can I think about it that way?
Yes, that would be accurate.
Okay. And then I guess I realize that we're putting together a transportation demand, a plan to try to reduce the level of single occupancy vehicles. But I guess I have a question to the applicant. Of your 650 new employees, or maybe maybe of your old employees, what do you, how many do you expect of those employees will get to this location in something other than a single occupancy vehicle? Maybe kind of tell me what about your current building as well as what your expectations might be for the new building from the applicant, if you have that answer or an idea?
I would be addressing sort of a general sense rather than this specific building because of course.
You don't have them yet.
We don't have the tenant yet, and it does vary somewhat significantly from tenant to tenant. As we have discussed on a prior meeting, in a prior meeting on a different project, we can have tenants who are involved in manufacturing that have multiple shifts. And sometimes there's an overlap there. In terms of general uptake of our shuttle program and other alternative transit modes, we've been quite successful. And I would say that somewhere in the range of 25% of our employees across the campus are getting to campus in a way other than a single occupant vehicle, if that answers your question.
Okay, that does answer my question. So if we're looking to reduce, and I understand we're looking at it from the other direction, which is allowing for bikes and parking and shuttle and carpool. I just am wondering if we're thinking, okay, well, maybe 25% will get there a certain, a different way. Then it seems like we probably wouldn't need to plan for 90% of them to come in a single occupancy vehicle for the number of parking that we're going to supply. So I understand that Menlo Park has a minimum number of parking spots, but I guess my my thought would be, can we reduce this number of parking spots more, given that we're right, right now, we're at 90%? I realize there's also a couple of spots for visitors or, you know, a couple of other spots, but it just feels, that feels very high to me. And I'm I'm wondering if there's, if we can think about reducing that to some extent, given all the other ways that you're looking for people to get there.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I certainly appreciate the sentiment. For those of you who don't know, I go virtually everywhere on a bicycle. That being said, we have to end. It's not lost on you, certainly those of you who have experience with other development or architecture, that the cost of building that parking is significant to us. And we are heavily incented financially not to build more parking than we need. The parking that we propose to build is based on literally decades of data around what the tenants need for parking, trying to anticipate the various types of uses that we might have at the site and accounting for, as you said, visitor, et cetera. I would love to build less parking. We will hopefully build less parking as we partner with the city and other agencies to create more alternative transit. This is the reality that we face today.
Okay, so I'm still going to issue that challenge to try to reduce your costs for parking and see where you might be able to trim that. And then as Commissioner Riggs was discussing, that, you know, the analysis is based, I think, on 2019 or pre-pandemic. I know that since the pandemic, our, we're not so peaky, we're not, we don't have the same exact peaks. And also, because your life sciences, as you mentioned, I think it was Mr. Tarleton mentioned that that the life sciences is tends to be less peaky than a typical office building. So I guess in the way that we do the analysis, I'm not really sure where that where that puts us, but I just wonder if maybe there might be some thoughts on on that. I think I'm I do have a couple of comments on LOS, but I guess I should, I guess I should maybe come back to those when we are, since it's not part of Sequa, through the chair.
Again, at your discretion, right? It's not part of Sequa, it's an add-on from Menlo Park.
But I guess it is kind of part of the EIR. So I would just say, when this comes back for final approval, and this is really to staff, I would like to see the LOS improvements broken down in maybe like a chart. Right now, it's really hard for me to kind of get a sense for each intersection, what is TIF versus non, non-TIF, and then also what's near term versus cumulative, and to indicate if there would, if this, if any of these would involve any road widening. I think when this comes back and it's when it's published, it would be really terrific to understand, maybe in a chart, where, what each, what each of those intersections is, whether it's TIF, non-TIF, near term, cumulative, and whether it indicate whether there would be any road widening. And I think that would really help us as commissioners to, if it's summarized that way, to help our decision-making process. And perhaps even do it for draft EIRs in the in the in the future. Is that something you think would be possible?
Chair DeCarty, if I may.
Yeah, of course, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that feedback. I think that we've tried to slim down the staff reports to to reduce the amount of reading material that we're giving you. But if that is a desired increase, like if you would like to see that information in a chart, I'm definitely more than happy to provide that, and we'll take that into effect, into account for the final EIR and then future EIR projects as well.
So I guess what I I would like to say is that, what I would maybe say is that I think that information is probably in there, but it's multiple paragraphs to find it. So I would almost say, well, maybe this would be less work for you if you could put it more into a chart format and less into prose. So just just a thought for that, because I certainly don't want to make extra work for you guys. I know you're all, you got a lot.
No, absolutely.
And I don't want to make, I don't want to make, I don't want to make longer reading for all of us either. I think we're in agreement.
Yes, understood. Yeah, we're in agreement.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll stop there and let somebody else chime in. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harris. Other questions or other comments related to the EIR from commissioners? Well, people are thinking perhaps, I have a couple that can follow on a thread that has already been picked up on. And I want to recognize and thank actually all the commissioners that touched on some of my questions. I do want to come back to the EIR and to the transportation question. So Ms. Mickelson, on the transportation impact, it would have been significant but for the expectation of utilizing the transportation demand management mitigation. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So how successful does the TDM have to be to move it from significant to not significant? In the context of some of the conversation we've had in ways that we or the public could understand, what does a successful TDM plan actually have to reduce in order to make it less than significant?
I can look this up for you to get you some more precise numbers, but the threshold for the city's sequel purposes is 15% below the citywide average?
Heidi, I have some of that information, I think, right in front of me. And then Gary can correct me if if I'm off. But I believe it's a 21.1% reduction in VMT needed to get below the city's threshold. And then the applicant put together a pretty robust TDM program that would be effective in the range of 27 to 30%. So it's it's beyond the the amount that would be needed to get below the city's threshold. Gary, let me know if that was incorrect.
That's correct. Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that's helpful. So and then, so the applicant's TDM plan is specific enough that you can anticipate based on past monitoring that it'll be in that 25 to 30% range. Is that the one that was included in the exhibit with the specific measures? Is that the plan we're talking about that touches on the bike share, the car share, the significant shuttles that are referenced in the presentation?
Yes, that's correct. And then for additional reference, the existing building at 1305 O'Brien Drive, the other building on the site, it is, it has a TDM plan, and it has been subject to monitoring. And just to give you an idea of what that's demonstrating, in 2018 and 2019, it was showing TDM effectiveness of about 32 to 40%, so they were doing quite well.
That's that's super helpful, and it's fabulous. I mean, I just, I should have said at the beginning, and I said this the last time we had a project, you know, I just, the the work and the leadership, Mr. Tarleton, you and your team on this over the decades has been exemplary, and it's fabulous. And I think you have so much to offer us as a city to learn from your experience, and obviously having this input is terrific. One of the questions I had about the TDM plan is that it mentioned the inclusion of the EV parking spaces, and it's not immediately clear to me how, so the TDM with the EV parking spaces does not necessarily reduce VMT, but it reduces VMT from emitting cars. Is that how we're supposed to look at that as being a successful part of a TDM program? And if so, if I have that right, then how do you figure out where the electric fuel is coming from for the cars that are in those spaces? And I guess that might be a question for Mr. Black, perhaps, or or Mr. Smith, I'm not sure.
The, yeah, the EV parking or encouraging EV use is not counted towards the TDM reduction because as as you point out, those cars are still on the road.
Got it. Okay, so it was listed in the TDM plan in our packet, but it was not included in the analysis of that 25 to 30% reduction.
That's correct.
Okay, that's super helpful. Then I have a question about parking spaces and VMT. Then I have a question about parking spaces and VMT. So, and Mr. Black, as long as you're there, I think this is for you. Is there a relationship between the cost of parking spaces and a reduction in VMT? Is there analysis that says if there's a higher cost to park your car, or not? Is that not part of how you think about potential mitigation or looking at what will be the, the traffic to a potential site?
Absolutely, there's a relationship between the cost of parking and, and the trip making, if you will, or the VMT. There's not, there's not a culture of, of charging employees for parking in Menlo Park, or at least not in this part of Menlo Park. And so it's not part of the TDM plan to, to charge for parking. And so, so Mr. Tarleton, I think, was talking about the cost of building the parking, but not the cost of, of operating the parking.
Yeah, I understand. It was a different question. So the reason it's not there is because we don't have a culture in Menlo Park of charging for parking, and therefore, or is it to say there are other measures that could get that 25 or 30% reduction, which would then get below the significance threshold?
Yes, I can, I can talk about, I guess, the, the corporate culture, if you will, of a lot of these employers is that they look at charging for parking as sort of a punitive measure towards employees. It could be interpreted that way, and they, rather than punitive, punitive measures, they want to use measures that are encouraging. So offering alternatives, free shuttles, you know, free bikes, car share, things like that are incentives. So it's like a carrot instead of a stick approach is sort of the corporate culture that we're seeing.
I understand. So for the purposes of the EIR, then, we have a TDM plan that can rely on carrots and the experience that we can have enough carrots so we can move the environmental impact to less than significant. It's a different conversation, if we want to have this as a city, about how much further we might go with what kinds of measures, but that would be from, from an EIR standpoint, would not be relevant to moving from significant to less than significant in the EIR. Do I have that summarized?
That's correct. The, the TDM plan that the project is, is proposing is sufficient to mitigate the VMT impact.
Yeah, well, that's fabulous. And it's fabulous that you've got the history. This is to Mr. Tarleton and team that can get to this 25 to 30% reduction. I will withhold the rest of my comments because they're not EIR-related on this, and on transportation and parking, they're going to be related to the building, and I'll do that later on. I do have a question about the, the, this is for the, for Mr. Tarleton, and on the biking. You noted, I think, in the parking that you've got the overlap potentially of some potential tenants, and so you've got that problem with you're going to have essentially two employees are there for 10 minutes, but they both have to park kind of issue. Have you been allowed, or could you allow, flex parking across your different buildings and different tenants in that region? Because I think you said they have different uses. Have you been allowed to do that? Have you been, has that been proposed in the past? And if not, if it were, would that be helpful at all in this, or not?
Good question. And as we vision out our campus there going forward, we do anticipate making use of shared parking facilities across tenants. That has not been the, the practice in the past. But we have made changes to our messaging through our tenants through both our leases and our campus-wide TDM program that that is coming. And we do already anticipate, to the extent possible, making use of some of these expensive parking spaces that are going to be part of the 1350 Adams Court project for future sharing.
So it sounds like you're headed that way, but it has not been in the past. Do you, do you have a census across all of your properties about what the usage of parking is, you know, just sort of, you know, is there in fact some excess capacity?
There is, in fact, some excess capacity. And as we vision out the campus going forward, we are trying to create opportunities for shared parking from tenant to tenant.
Okay, fabulous. I think that's, sounds fabulous and creative and helpful. Appreciate it. Hang on, Mr. Barnes, let me just see if I have any, as long as I have the floor on EIR questions. I don't think so, and if I do, I'll come back. Mr. Barnes, let me, Commissioner Barnes, let me recognize you.
Thank you. Question through the chair to staff, and I think this is probably best directed to Mr. Smith. It relates to the, the EIR and in specific to the level of service data. And I wanted to understand a little bit more about the LOS in more specifically, is, is an LOS reading for a specific intersection able to tease out in specific what this specific project will do to that, you know, intersection A. And is that impact specific to, you know, the incremental impact of this, of this project?
Right. So I, I would start by saying, even though LOS was studied by the transportation consultant as part of this process, I just want to be clear, it is not a Sequo impact. This is a completely separate topic from, from the EIR. But LOS is looking at seconds of delay at, at various intersections around the project site, and sometimes it, it can spill back through additional intersections further out from the project site. But it is looking at the amount of delay that the project contributes to individual study intersections. Does that help?
It does. In, in my recollection, when LOS has been looked at before, there was an inability to, so say, for instance, Station 1300 and some of the intersections around there, there was a statistical, the way it was reported out, it doesn't, it didn't specifically say, okay, great, for this particular project, we can quantify for this intersection what this project's going to do, because you've got a body of data, you have, it includes, when you do LOS, some of the externalities for the environment which feed into that particular intersection, and I wasn't under the impression that I could get that fine and say, great, for this intersection, for this time period, we're able to remove the externalities, we're able to remove any flows and, and whatever else goes into either feeding or not feeding that intersection, and say, for this particular project, this is the addition. I didn't think that we were able to go to that level of specificity, and that was the, you know, it's kind of the core of my question.
So I, I would, just to make sure I'm not getting too far out of my depth, Kristi Ann Choi, who's a senior transportation engineer, or I see Gary Black has joined. Gary, would you be able to expand on that a little, that question a little bit?
Yes, the, the transportation study does show for each intersection that we studied, the amount of traffic that would be added by this project, just by this project, and that it also calculates an associated delay that would be caused by the traffic from this project individually for each one of the intersections that we studied. It's, it's in a giant table. It's pretty, takes a while to get through, but the data is, is there.
Great, thank you. And that satisfies my question about the specificity aspect of it. Right, that is my, my question as it relates to, somewhat related, apparently, to the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Any other questions from commissioners or comments related to the EIR this evening? I have one re, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty, and I have a question about bus stops, and I hope it's not totally irrelevant, but I think it is relevant to the whole topic of alternative ways of commuting. I, I did a, you know, little Google Street View, looking at, for instance, a bus stop along Willow in O'Brien. And just curious, was it a shelter or offered any protection? And it's a, simply a sign, no bench, no shelter, and when you see something like that and you're driving, you kind of think, man, who wants to, who wants to commute by bus? When, you know, the bus infrastructure looks like that. And again, this is not maybe something that the applicant is responsible for, but I, there's, I know there's a pot of community amenity money, and I'm just curious, and please forgive my ignorance, other commissioners or anyone chime in to say that's not an appropriate use of money, but I, I just am curious if that aspect of public transit could be improved, because I know there's this growing fund of money. So again, apologize if that's not an appropriate use of those funds.
So, through the chair, okay. There is a list of approved committed, community amenities, and I believe that I don't have the list right in front of me, so I'm going from memory here, but I believe that one of them is transportation-related improvements, and so it could be, so there's a, there is a growing fund of, of in Lufy's for community amenities, which if the council determined that that was a project that they would like to support, could certainly make the case that, that improved transit facilities related to improved bus stops, more shelter, that kind of thing, could be part of that, that funding that's used. Or in the case of a specific project applicant, they could make that part of their proposal. And then it would have to be evaluated by the, whatever decision-making body. So in this case, the project is, is for, up for review and entitlements from this commission, and so they would have to make the case for those improvements, and you as a body would have to accept that as a, a transportation-related improvement, but just to give you an idea of, of how that might work.
Great, thank you.
I was searching for the community amenities list. I think it's in the staff report, there's, there are links to specific aspects of community amenities in this project, but I don't think there was a link to the list. And so that might be, Mr. Smith, helpful the next time around for any interested parties to, to see that. So thank you for that question. Commissioner Doe, Commissioner Harris. You somehow are on mute, even though it looks like.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, AirPods running out of juice. Yeah, so I'm just wondering, to Commissioner Doe's question, improving bus stops, is that something that can come out of TIF money? Or no, because that only can be used for intersections?
Mr. Smith, yeah.
So that's a good question. I might need some assistance. I believe that projects that are identified for, projects have to be specifically identified for TIF funding, and so if that's not a project that has been identified, then it wouldn't go towards that. I, I was able to pull up the community amenities, approved community amenities list, and one of the, one of these is transit and transportation improvements, and it says bus service and amenities increase the number of stops, bus frequency, shuttles and bus shelters specifically are called out, so I think that would be a, a prime use of, of the money that was intended that way. In terms of TIF funding, I don't know if Kristi Ann Choi from our transportation division is able to assist with how TIF projects are identified.
Hi, good evening. Kristi Ann Choi, she's your transportation engineer. So, yeah, the, our, the city has the Transportation Impact Fee Program, and when it was adopted, we had identified a number of projects that would be funded by the TIF, and as Mr. Smith mentioned, they do have to already be identified. So the TIF money can only be used for those types of projects. I don't think we had any particular bus shelters listed, so that would not be a potential funding source.
Thanks. Helpful.
Great, thank you. And to commissioners, some of these things blend together. There's EIR-related questions, but we can and look at community amenities and are asked to look at community amenities in the next portion of our conversation tonight as well, so. So any final comments on the EIR from commissioners? And as you are contemplating, I'm going to turn to Mr. Smith. Have you gotten the feedback you need? Are there any outstanding questions you have of the commission regarding the EIR this evening?
In terms of the EIR, we really appreciate all of the feedback, the questions, the great dialogue. No further needs from staff in that area.
Right. Any last questions from commissioners? All right, with that, I will close this item of the agenda, item G1, which was looking at the EIR. We will now turn to item H1. I'm not staring at an agenda. I hope I have said that the right way. And pick up looking at the full project. So for this portion, Mr. Smith, do you have any guiding comments? And then I'll turn it over to the applicant for the study session, if you want to add anything to your original presentation before we turn to public comment. So, Mr. Smith?
Sure. So this is, this is an opportunity, now that we've moved past the EIR public hearing, to ask questions about the design, the community amenities, as Chair DeCarty mentioned, other aspects of the projects outside of environmental impacts, and would also add that it would be great to accept public comments on this portion as well, in particular, after your discussion and questions.
Terrific, thank you. And that would also, to Commissioner Smith, this, this would also include any conversation around the BMR aspect of the application as well. Is that correct?
Right. There is a BMR housing agreement that would be associated with this application, and so that, that could also be discussed as part of your, your clarifying questions or interests.
Terrific. And again, there's no action by the commission tonight. So this is really for input to the applicant, Mr. Tarleton. You said at the beginning that your original presentation from the three of you was the complete presentation, but that was a while ago, so I just wanted to double check if there's anything you wanted to add, as you did a great job setting us up before.
Thank you for that, Chair. I can't think of anything for us to add at the moment. I anticipate there will be questions for either me or our design team. Susan, did you, did you think of something that you'd like to add?
No, not at this time.
Fabulous. Well, your, your original presentation was comprehensive and has a lot for us to, to sink into, so thank you. To commissioners, any pressing clarifying questions? Otherwise, I would love to turn it over to public comment for folks who've been waiting quite a while. All right. Thank you for your forbearance, commissioners. And with that, Mr. Turner, let's turn it over to public comment for, public comment on all aspects of this project.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. It has been a while. Just as a reminder, if you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling in to tonight's meeting, press star nine on your keypad, and that will raise your hand on Zoom. And at the moment, I don't see any hands raised, but actually, I do. Okay, so, once again, I will introduce and Okay, so, once again, I will introduce Pam Jones. As a reminder, you have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction, which you live, or your organizational affiliation. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment and we will make sure that each speaker has the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Pam, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you Pamela Jones again. I have two questions that I think center around quality of life. One of them is in regards to the housing analysis. Since 2009, all the housing analysis have stated that, that they would have minimal impact. And the, there's been significant displacement and it's demonstrated on the 2020 census and the loss of, of people over the last decade. People that originally lived here. It's also occurred in other areas of Menlo Park. So I get a little confused when the analysis data says one thing, but yet when you look at the census and physically who's living here and the other reports, it's saying something else. Another part of that, of quality of life and given the displacement, it, I want to see the BMR at 20%. So the amount that's put in there, since it's not going to be built onsite, should compensate for 20% BMRs. The other piece about quality of life is that, and I hate to belabor the air quality monitors, but that data is from Redwood City Station. And Redwood City Station and this portion of Menlo Park, as well as, as would be in District Five, we have entirely different climate conditions. So that data is actually inadequate, if not just, you know, wrong. So in considering that, you know, there should be some kind of medication so that the quality of our life does not decrease. And this also includes the people in East Palo Alto who were on O'Brien and then, you know, backed up to all of that, that area there. And then I would like to thank Commissioner Riggs for giving me more of an explanation on exactly the effects of liquefaction and the fact that, that the way building is done nowadays, that that's taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Jones for your comments.
At the moment, I don't see any more hands raised.
Let's just give it a minute, if anybody has a comment on the project, we would absolutely love to hear it. Especially because you, you've hung in there with us for two and a half hours. All right, anything, Mr. Turner?
No, and.
All right, that was, my sales pitch wasn't good enough. All right, with that, we will close public comment. Thank you for your help on that tonight, Mr. Turner. And bring it back to the DIA for planning commissioners. And again, the floor is open to ask questions or comment about any aspect of the project, to ask questions of the applicant team or of city staff on any aspect that you would like. So who would like to start us off? Recognize Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick sort of just a housekeeping question to start. The average project height, that is average over the site, including two buildings, not just the new building, is that correct?
That is correct, it includes both 1305 O'Brien building and the proposed 1350 Adams building.
I'll just note, I don't have an issue with that, given the location and this particular district height, at least to me, is not an issue. Do we as a city, that because this is not an EIR question, but do we as a city look at how much water is being used by new projects? And I, I raised this issue knowing that this project is particularly making a particular effort to conserve water. But it, it couldn't help but for me, raise the issue because we have other projects to go.
Right, so I would, two things I would note is that first, they do have to do reduction of water usage on the site for, I believe they have to reduce their non potable water usage by at least 30%. And I think as they indicated, they're, they're going beyond that amount by using efficient fixtures, drought tolerant landscaping. There's different ways to get that, that percentage to work out. So that's one requirement on the project. The other aspect of it is that we do evaluate the water use for the building and a water supply assessment was prepared for the project. And it, it does have to be approved actually by the city council as the governing body of the municipal water district. And it was approved, I think, a couple of months back. It needs to be approved prior to release of the draft EIR. And so the city council evaluated the water usage, found that it was, and the study found that it was within the amount of water that, that we have as a city to, to serve this project.
So when you, you refer to the municipal water district, but I'm not sure whether this area, and correct me, is this actually Cal water rather than city water in this zone?
This, this particular project would be within the municipal water district within the city water zone.
Interesting, okay. And again, this slight departure from this project, but do we monitor the availability of water with what projects we approve? Or do we simply go ahead as long as it meets current ordinances? I mean, this next year, we could all be cutting back on existing buildings and existing uses. And we are building new buildings. And again, this project is particularly thoughtful about water. We have other projects on the books, not to mention dozens of homes and other small projects that will be adding to our water use at a particularly difficult time. And then I guess I just wanted for a future frame of reference, does the city look at an overall budget somewhat similar to the way we have with the general plan in anticipating so many square feet of office and so many square feet of hotel and so forth?
Right, so there was a water supply evaluation that was done as part of Connect Menlo, which looked at all of the potential development that could happen in the life sciences office and residential mixed use districts and found that there would be adequate water to serve all of that potential development combined with the remainder of the city. But individual projects then have, under the zoning requirements, water budgets and they're required to report on those annually. And so we will be able to track this project and make sure that it is only using the share of water that we have allocated towards it, so that we do not trigger, you know, additional water usage beyond what we had contemplated as part of the evaluation of all these projects together.
Again, I'm not so much concerned about this project as other projects that we're going to be asked to approve this year. And perhaps this is something I would prompt, is this something, an issue I might prompt for reevaluation to staff? Or is it more appropriate to city council?
So to help address your question maybe a little bit more, maybe I haven't been getting to the point that you want. If there's a new building that's proposed, that's 100,000 square feet or more, they do have to prepare a water budget and methodology for us as part of review and approval of the project. And then every 12 months, they are submitting all of the data. And so we, we would be looking at each of these projects' water budgets in combination to make sure that they're meeting the, the amount of water that's, that's permitted. And that ties back to the water supply evaluation for the entire area. Does that, does that help? Or I apologize if I'm not getting to the.
Actually, I do trust in that. I know how careful, how diligent staff is on projects. No, I meant whether the city should establish a citywide budget for water for over, say, the next five years, while we see whether our current extended drought is actually the new normal. So it would be a citywide issue, not a project issue. And it doesn't sound like we have a citywide budget. We just look at our allocation from Cal water and how much we have in the from our two sources. So it, it looks like there isn't a citywide, and I guess I wanted to prompt that we maybe should consider one.
I understand now, yeah. I don't think we have a, a total citywide water budget per se that, that we're using. You know, each of these, all of, I would say, all the development across the city, new and proposed, existing, whatever it may be, is all subject to the same. If, well, we, we have already entered some, some water restrictions, but every project and every property would be subject to all of those same requirements. But to, to answer your question, I don't think, there's nothing per se that, that shows how much water usage is, is being taken up by the entire, by all of the city and every project and every, every building that way. So that analysis would, would probably take some additional work and, and calculation to figure that out. But it's an idea that, that can be pursued if council was interested.
Thank you, that's all I wanted, yeah. I've beaten on that issue for today. So I wanted to get to traffic. So I'll make, if I may be so bold, the kind of obvious observation. When Bayfront Expressway is completely filled with cars and not moving, and when Willow Road is filled with cars and barely moving, we have a fantastic EIR situation because the BMT is zero. We couldn't do better in that regard. But many residents are not thrilled with that condition. So this is why, and here we are outside the EIR discussion. And this is why we still have LOS for city planning. Because although it may seem that the, the very concern is from another decade or another century, people really would prefer to be able to get out, turn left and go to their destination. So where we have, for example, in this case, potentially 650 new residents, I mean, new occupants for the new building. And that's a good deal lower than it could have been if it were an office building. And we have a diversion rate of potentially up to 40% because to their credit, Talton Properties has achieved as much as that. We would still have somewhere around 400 new cars. I don't think there's anything that this body can do to tell the Willows or Bell Haven, or for that matter, Suburban Park and Laurel Island and Flit Triangle, that our new projects are not going to affect their ability to get in and out of the neighborhoods. But I do want to press the opportunity to potentially reduce the amount of parking that is required for the building. If there were a condition under which Mr. Tarleton could could see his business model still be successful with less parking. So through the chair, if I could ask staff, and I guess this would be for Ms. Sandomeyer, is it viable for this body to ask that the project reduce parking? If, assuming of course it is seen as viable for the applicant?
I think that, that's a reasonable question opposed to the applicant, if the parking could be reduced.
All right, thank you, because I, I know, of course, we have regulations and our expectations. So through the chair, if I could ask Mr. Tarleton, might there be a condition under which you could present a positive opportunity to potential companies to lease? For example, could you represent that you only have 75% of the parking that might be standard for the use type? But on the other hand, you reserve more than 25% as flex parking for any tenant who turns out to actually need more parking? Does, does that approach make any sense?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Riggs. We, as a property owner and a group of professionals, you know, DES has been working with us now for over 40 years on this life science project, are continually evaluating what is the ideal facility for our tenants? With respect to how the, the building is put together, the various uses that will go into the building, the amount of parking that we provide to the building now and in the future. We have been quite deliberate and we hope very thoughtful about the level of parking that we're proposing for this project. It is not a knee jerk response to market demand, but rather a deliberate analysis of the data that we have from our users across the portfolio over decades. We continue to push the the barrier or the, the line, if you will, on how much parking will be provided for a project. The original Menlo Business Park was designed with 3.3 per thousand parking, which by the way, was a reduction from the city requirement that we asked for. The city, of course, now takes a different view of parking and has a band of 1.5 to 2.5. But at the time of the approval of the original Menlo Business Park, the requirement was four per thousand and we asked for an exception to go lower. We will continue to assess and will continue to push that down over time. And as I mentioned earlier, we think of this building and the associated parking as part of an evolving ecosystem. And will very likely over time dedicate some of the parking in this facility to shared parking across other facilities. However, at this point, the data does not support a lowering. A lowering of the of the parking ratio for this facility.
Okay, understood. While I have you. Although, and I will share with a group that I have met and discussed with Mister Talton. Some of the aspects of his business park. Would you describe the shuttle service that Talton Properties? Provides to its buildings and might similarly provide for this project.
You're you're giving me the opportunity to plug my park, Mr. Commissioner Riggs. I'm happy to do so.
If you can achieve it, I'd love to get it down in audio recording so that we can look forward to it. Yes.
So we started our shuttle program quite some time ago and it started with. A shuttle that ran between the park and the University Avenue. Caltrain Station in downtown Palo Alto. We subsequently added an additional shuttle that ran from the park to the Union City Bart Station. And after that, we added a shuttle that ran from the park to. The Mildred Gray Bart Station, and then after that, we added a shuttle that goes to two stops in San Francisco. We. Do an annual. Survey of of all of our employees of the tenants in the park by zip code. And we. Pull together comments from the the. Shuttle users and the prospective shuttle users about what changes they would like to make to the system and we tailor it. And modify it all the time with the goal of trying to get as many people as possible to campus. In an alternate mode. That's one of the aspects, of course, as as you know, Commissioner Riggs. One of the things that I like to promote as much as possible with our tenants is for them to ride their bike. To campus, including an electric bike share program that we have on campus.
So I'll be so bold as to ask, what is the interval for the shuttle to the Caltrain Station?
That's a great, that's a great question and I I feel inadequate and then I couldn't tell you. It's that each of those routes from the park to the Caltrain Station. From the park to the Union City Bart Station, from the park to the Mill Bray Station, from the park to San Francisco, these are individual dedicated shuttles. And they run basically continuously during commute hours.
All right, so potentially it's every half hour to the to the Caltrain Station, that kind of thing.
Right, and and we not only vary the schedule based on demand. I mean, basically, the shuttle to the Caltrain Station goes to the Caltrain Station to pick up. A specific train stop times. And we will vary the size of the shuttle and the frequency of the shuttle depending on the demand from the tenants.
All right, that that sounds terrific. Thank you very much. I will just make an observation to to close that. If there are six hundred and fifty new employees, they will live somewhere. And one of the reasons that minimal impact on Menlo Park housing is indicated is that. Currently, I think the business park has something quite low. I don't remember where I marked it, but it's under twenty percent of the employees. Live in Menlo Park. That. On the one hand reinforces how important regional transportation is. And well, and I will leave it at that. Others would like to speak. Oh, I I'm sorry, I do have one final question and this actually is an architectural question. And through the chair, if I could ask Ms. Ishwala to further describe the roof screen. And I ask this on projects big and small because the roof screen. Is frequently more than a story high and therefore it ends up. Being quite prominent. So what can you tell me? I did see on your materials that it's corrugated metal. Unlike the smooth and upscale finishes of the building.
It is, it is metal, will be painted a gray color complementary to the rest of the building. It is approximately sixteen feet above the the roof itself, the roof. Is it eighty-five at the top of the roof screen somewhere around a hundred and one, so. The sixteen feet is in order to screen the mechanically units. That it can be quite large to support the life sciences. There are exhaust fans and and. Air handling units, cooling towers and things. So we've sized it in order to screen. Everything so so that you from the street you would not see any mechanical systems.
Would you consider? Alternative materials? To the corrugated?
Well, it's it's a system that's been. It it's lightweight, we're trying to keep it as lightweight as possible up. At that height and it's robust, it has a lot of girts behind it because it's large, you know, it's tall and and. You have a lot of wind resistance. So this is a system that is because the corrugation gives it a lot of strength. If you go with a flat panels, it has less strength and you have to. Build more structure behind it, which adds weight to the building. So we feel pretty confident that this is a a good solution.
Have you considered? Materials that are not solid, either perforated or. Assembled grid or trellis like.
Yeah, I know, we've seen that that is kind of one of the trends of, you know, having something that is a perforated metal or something, but. That you would be able to see the the some of the equipment behind it. And so we preferred the the more opaque nature that you wouldn't. See all of the mechanical stuff behind it. I know some buildings you do see that sort of like a veil almost. But and we felt that we really wanted to to hide that.
Well, I will just leave that out as something to consider. Personally, I think mechanical equipment. On a bio side building need not be hidden entirely, but that's. Perhaps that's just my opinion. All right. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I'll recognize the next hand up in the upper corner of my screen is Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you, Chair DeCardi, and thank you to my fellow commissioners for your comments up to this point. Couple thoughts that. That I have. One, this is a great advertisement for V M T when. When looking at Willow Road and seeing how many cars on Willow Road are there. For a policymaker, the real question is. Who are those people? Who was on Willow Road? And. V M T is 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 designed and was adopted by the state for the purposes of saying. Great, if you're going to do an infield development. What are the vehicle miles traveled to come to and from that particular development? And how do you design transportation programs around that? You you can look at Willow Road and if you carefully ferret out what's Redwood City traffic, what's Palo Alto traffic, what's neighborhood community traffic? I mean, we in Menlo Park are uniquely situated that we have an east-west corridor that goes directly across the Dunbarton Bridge. So when we look at. You know, any development in the city. One of the questions needs to be, you know, what is ours and what is not and what is a specific development contributing to that? And B M T gets you there because it says what are, in fact, the vehicle miles traveled? You know, level of service is tied to induced demand and we all know that. When you pour more concrete and add more capacity, ways will find a way to get over it. So a good T D M. With B M T and that's why the state adopted it is really the best way to understand what an infield development is. Is contributing to a specific community based on that infield development. I will say thank you, you know, early on in in Mister Talton's. Presentation, you know, he was, he was not. Shy about talking about the incremental value of the tax base to the tax base of his development. You know, the jobs it brings to the community and I'm always appreciative of that. Of the commercial components. And the commercial developments that we have in our city and how important they are to the. To the balance that we have in the city. I think this project, we've seen it before. Is well done. I mean, if I think about the materials, everything about the design. If I think about the the layout and the sighting, I think it's all. Really appropriate for this area. Of a quality of finish and thoughtfulness of design. That is certainly creative to the. To the area. I do like the integration of the garage. I remember this. It is, it is in contrast to a previous. Tarleton project we saw, I think about six some odd months ago where the narrative was, let's get more surface parking and let's not build. A stacked parking structure and in fact, just as this demonstrates and this demonstrates prior had demonstrated prior to. With Tarleton's. Number of projects in the area and with the T D M with the ability. To potentially cross park. Developments, it does make sense to do parking structures and it does make sense to plan forward to cross park and it does make sense to do. To look at parking structures as being able to accommodate multiple uses and that's, you know, that's why you go up instead of. You go surface and I think that's, this is an example of that that we've heard of before and I think it has the opportunity to work well here. I really enjoyed the. The the art, the art part of it, I thought was wonderful. Looking at the the art part and the statues and, you know, I couldn't help but be struck by the. The landscape, the landscape design, the integration of grasses. And all of that for this area, I think is only going to be wonderful and the educational component of. Science and how we got there and who was responsible for it, I think is a great way to. Get the brains of anyone in the community, not the least of which is any schoolchildren that go there. I think it's a wonderful idea. We've heard that before. Appreciate that still still in play. Talking about in Lufy's for a moment, if we go back to. If we go back to the genesis of of Connect Menlo and, you know, how we got here and what the grand bargain was, the grand bargain in effect was. The city will upzone portions of of the city. Which in effect creates value, creates money and profit for the developers in the area. And the bargain on the way back is that there is enough benefits. That not the least of which is community amenities to offset some of the impacts. You know, we had in that area a real finite list of players. Be it Bohannon, be it Sabrato, be it Tarleton, be it Facebook. Grace Star came in later, so there are pluses and minuses of that, right? With the with the aggregation of ownership in the area. We got, we were able to push sustainability. Programs in that area that far exceed other communities. The the place making aspect of it, the circulation, intra-area circulation aspect of it. Because you didn't have a bunch of different owners and a bunch of different parcels at different layers of development, you could actually do some meaningful. Design, place making for that area and that's what made it successful. And you could also get scale, T D M at scale down there because you have. Unlimited amount of interest, but again, on the backside of that is, you know, what does the community get? And one of those pieces is the community amenities and I. I'm disappointed again that the, in this instance, that the developers asking for to pay. Be an in Lufy and I, for the record. Believe that there's a reason why you set up community amenities to be hard projects because cities are. Not well equipped to execute on these projects. Cities don't have the scale to execute on these things and cities. Left to their own devices, may or may not respond to the needs of the community and I think. When you put the burden of delivering a community amenity on the developers, you get real value. When you bring it back in in Lufy's and now charge public works. At Menlo Park, not that they aren't able to do it, but because this is an added scale and scope and pricing. That simply can't get done if you were. You can't get them to the level. In the benefits of the developer doing it themselves and being delivered on time, on budget. Far, far away in Lufy's and that's why inland fees are not the norm. And that's why I purposefully, whether it's for a B M R unit or for community amenities, it was specified that these would be specific. Community man is not a slush fund like an in Lufy, so I'm disappointed. Because I don't think it's in service to the community. I think the community is going to short end of the stick. With the developers opting on the easier way out, which is to pay some money and go do something else. I think it is. A tremendous disservice. To leverage, to not leverage the unique abilities of a developer delivered community amenities rather than than Lufy. So while the project, for many, many reasons, does what it's supposed to do. And delivers in the Connect Men, Connect Menlo area, what's supposed to deliver in his. Fine demonstration of that. It's the in Lufy part of it, which is disappointing to me, so. On this project and I'm glad. Couple years down the road that we're seeing it. So for now, those are my. Are my comments. And I guess actually through the chair, if it's permissible, to ask. The developer, the applicant, if they would comment on their idea for paying in lieu versus not in lieu and what they. And kind of an open ended question about. That and what they. And why they chose that. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you for the question, Commissioner Barnes. Frankly, we share your disappointment. This project. Was put forth to the city, you know, we we have, the application was four years ago. And at the time that we applied. We were in discussions with the community about building a library. With the community benefit dollars from this project. And it was in conjunction with the Sabrato organization and using some of the public benefit projects from dollars from their project. As you know, the the library project became part of. The Meta or Facebook project and which is fantastic. The the community got that project outside of the public benefit. Project, you know, you could argue that it's essentially public benefit for projects that were already under construction. We then proposed to council that we build the. Pool and aquatic facilities portion of the new community center. There was a strong. Opposition to that, to our doing that. And a pretty clear message from council that. They wanted to revisit the list of community benefits and that. Despite our efforts to identify not just one but two different projects to that we could build. That. We really needed to. Allow them the pro, the time and the process to coalesce around what. The community benefits list was going to be. Which, you know, here we are. Four years after application. four years after application. You know, what do we do? And, and so the community benefit provision calls for essentially a penalty. You have to pay a premium in, if you do, if you choose the In Lou fee. We would much rather be halfway done with a library or an aquatic center for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, in closing, I think the community, I think the In Lou fees process is a joke for the way it's being carried out. And I would, as, as a commissioner, as a sole commissioner, and this is not directed to you, Mr. Tarleton, just in general, as I close my remarks. It is not representative of delivering material, meaningful benefits to the community. And I think the process is fundamentally broken and rife with capricious decisions and individualized decisions that may or may not reflect what the community wants. I'll close my comments with that.
With permission from the chair, I'll, I'll offer that we are very committed to pushing all the levers we can grab to make sure that the community benefit dollars that we pay in, into this pot result in positive benefit for the community. We've sat on, you know, community or district committees in the past around public benefit and channeling redevelopment dollars, et cetera. We would be happy to participate in such a group or committee if it were created here. We, we're going to be here for decades more. And it's incredibly important to us that this whole concept, as you, as you said, Commissioner Barnes, this grand bargain be carried out for the benefit of Bell Haven.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Any further comments or follow-up?
No, thank you for asking.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Before I ask my question, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Barnes for raising that community amenity issue. And Mr. Tarleton, your thoughtful, clearly committed response. I think me, being new to this process, hearing those questions, it's very enlightening. And I'm also thanking you to all the commissioners for your comments on how do we, you know, trying to push parking down. And again, Mr. Tarleton's success you have done with the shuttles and, and when you said that the number used to be 3.3 spaces per thousand square feet and it makes you chuckle. So it's hopeful, there's progress being made. So I really appreciate this discussion. My, my question was on the Paseo. So first, when, when I visited the site, I saw people, maybe about 10, singling in pairs, walking in the street, you know, having meetings or just getting some fresh air. And so when you see the landscape design and there's, you know, not one walkway, but two walkways, a sidewalk and a meandering walk. That's, I think it's very thoughtful and a generous design of public open space. When I was looking at the documents originally, I was curious, why wasn't that landscape area on the west side where the future Paseo will be to kind of amplify that pelvic zone between Willow Village and this project. But the Ms. Eschweiler, that diagram you showed where it connects to 1440 was very helpful to see the, the reasoning behind, behind that. So my, one of my, my, my question is, is there a visual diagram showing the network of Paseos planned in progress, completed, just so, you know, me being new to this can have more context on where that Paseo on the western edge, where that's plugging into beyond this project site.
Yes, we've actually spent a lot of time thinking about the Paseo and, and what connections can be made. And I think you, last week, you probably, it, well, you weren't here perhaps for the presentation on the Willow Village, but they have a presentation where they were showing the Paseo, the 20-foot wide Paseo, multi-modal path going parallel to that property line, but all on their side of the property line. And we have had some discussions about whether or not the, you know, should that split on the property line? And at some points, we've talked about that. We have, and, and it's in the, the drawing package, a contingency for if that full width Paseo, a pair that runs the full length of our property and, and beyond is not approved, if it doesn't get built, then we can build our, we can continue our multimodal, our publicly accessible open space path along that property line. We can continue that down to build our half of the Paseo. Should that, should that be needed?
Thank you. And I, I guess I should also, sorry, that might be a question for staff also about the, the context beyond, beyond this project site.
Yeah, if, if I may, we do have a zoning map that was approved as part of the Connect Menlo project that shows all of the proposed locations for Paseos throughout the Bayfront area. This one in particular, I think was envisioned to connect up to the Dumbarton rail corridor in, in sort of envisioning a future potential transit connection at some point there. And then it runs south and sort of further in west into the, into the Life Science District. And it connects to a new street that's envisioned, or connects to the side, the street network that would lead out towards Willow Road. So I, I would be happy to send you actually a link to it. It's on our, our city website. And so I'll make a note to, to provide you with that information.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Doe?
Just one last comment and observation. And I, I, in some of the renderings, I think I saw young kids, maybe high school kids, not just employees engaging with the science sculptures. And I just happened to see that there's a mid Peninsula high school less than a mile walking distance to the site. So I mean, I don't, I don't know if any of the, there's any kind of high school science outreach programs, but you could imagine the site the great landscape design really being enlivened by that kind of youth and collaboration.
Through the chair, I'll, I'll take that as a question. And yes, yes, Commissioner Doe, we do have high school outreach programs. We have high, groups of high school kids come through a number of the tenants' spaces to see what life science in action looks like. And there are also some internship programs across our portfolio as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Vice Chair Harris.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Tarleton, Ms. Eschweiler and Mr. Hutter, Huthur, Hutter. These, this presentation has been really helpful. The presentation on architectural renderings, super helpful. As much as I'm not a huge fan of parking, I do like the way it is tucked in. I think that makes it more handsome. I like the stairwell that encourages climbing the stairs versus taking the elevator. I, I find in so many buildings I occupy the stairs, I'm always wanting to take the stairs and they're always hidden, making it difficult to, you can't find them. And then once you find them, they may not be that clean or inviting. So elevator usage is always encouraged. So I really appreciate the way that you put in these stairwells. I like the darker accent, medium gray color with the light color on the, on each of those corners, highlighting the step back. I like that. That's very handsome to me. I appreciate the dual plumbing, preparing us for the future. I wish all projects would do that. And of course, I'm really excited about the scientist sculptures that they're literally larger than life, past innovators. And I do appreciate working with not only some high schools, but also some of the middle school. I think there's a middle school pretty close by in East Palo Alto as well. So to the extent that kids can be brought over there to take a look and maybe get a little docent tour, I think would be outstanding. I also appreciate the extra half an acre of public space in your partnership with Meta to expand that sidewalk. And I would say, I hope that Tarleton, with this project and others, can continue to partner with Meta for anything that can be helpful for this area as Meta comes online with the Willow Village. There are a number of things that could, that I could see happening. I know the, I appreciate all the shuttle services that you've done, such a great example for other developers and employers to emulate. And perhaps there will be in the not too distant future shared shuttles between several developers or several employers, and especially as Willow Village comes online, so that we really can get more people out of cars and not have Willow be a disaster. The other thing that was mentioned last week, and I think maybe has been mentioned with another, another presentation before my time with you all, was and I think it was brought up by Commissioner Tate, was considering the partnership with Meta to install a road to the Bayfront. The idea of a road, another road on the other side of, of the Meta Willow Village to get out to the Bayfront versus all the traffic going through Willow. This was mentioned by a couple of people last week at the Meta Willow Village presentation, but to the extent that Tarleton would be interested in working with Meta on something like that, I'm sure that would be welcome. And then back to transportation, I'll try not to beat a dead horse, but I would like to applaud Mr. Tarleton for challenging this body in a reduction of parking. And feel free, anytime you would like to come back to us and push us to reduce parking for any of your projects. Please, please do so. I really, I, I would welcome that push. And just then finally talking about carrots and sticks, I did want to mention that Stanford, and I'm going to mention this probably every time, Stanford University charges dollars for parking. They don't consider their parking free. And they also have a carrot in that they give a rebate for those who ride a bike. So perhaps, or, you know, there could be a way that in addition to giving, you know, allowing free shuttles or e-bikes or something, if there is a monetary reward for biking, you know, I think that we can look for more carrots in addition to sticks. So, oh, and then finally, I wanted to agree with, just kind of give a shout out on the community amenities that Commissioner Barnes brought up. My understanding is that we are, we were supposed to have, or we are going to have an updated community amenity list so that we can kind of backtrack on these In Lou fees that I think we can all agree are not the best. And I, I personally had thought that new list was going to come sooner rather than later. But now it seems like it's taking a little time. So I, you know, to the extent that something that we're able to, you know, make this better and get our community amenity list, I hope we can come back to and say, hey, wait a minute, we, we, we'd love for you to build some of these things. I definitely agree that you're in a better position to build community amenities that the community needs than, than the city is. So so thanks so much about that. And, and hopefully there'll be an update soon from the city council. And, and I would say that we as commissioners could certainly push the city council members to, to, you know, get that going. So that we can all feel good about the community amenities that are being built. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Riggs, you've come off mute. Did you have a comment or a question?
I am glad you mentioned it. I hate to think what I might have said.
I don't think you said anything. I just did not, I did not see that little red indicator. So I wondered if you had a question. Questions from other commissioners, comments for right now? While you're thinking, I'll, I'll, I'll pick up on a couple and ask a few. I think I have like five or six things. I really want to thank my fellow commissioners. You've already touched on a bunch of what's interest to me. So in, first of all, I just, I'll start out and echo a lot of what Commissioner Harris said and, and some other of the commissioners. I think in general, this is a really fine-looking project. I think it fits in well with the life sciences portion of our community. I think the massing and doing that sort of three nested approach does a really nice job of breaking up something that otherwise would look really sort of large and imposing. I really like how you are thinking about materials that fit in. I like a lot on the presentation, Ms. Eschweiler, about the landscaping. I appreciate Commissioner Doe's comments about the Paseos. So for one of the biggest things that we're responsible for on planning commission, I think this project is nicely on its way for fitting in and for being approved for that part of our community. And I would agree with Commissioner Riggs that the height questions are not particularly important to me as well. I think it all fits in. So that's my overarching first comment. The second comment about the art, having grown up and being the son of artists and architects all around my life, I love this part of the project, Mr. Huthur, and I apologize if I too have sort of bungled your name a couple hours later. But really appreciate you sharing your vision and your passion and to Mr. Tarleton team for making that connection. The one thing that I would wish for a little bit, and you've already mentioned the connectivity with students in the community, is to think through a little bit the selection. You know, who are we serving? Who, I, I, as you said, I think, Mr. Tarleton, you wanted this to be a destination point. And I, I think you meant it as a destination point, not just for people who are working in life sciences, but for the broader community. And with that, I appreciate the outreach and the potential for education with students and members of our community, but I wonder if there isn't an opportunity for co-creation. And to actually talk a bit about who these scientists are, the background of innovation in science, the multiple ways that has happened in the history of our world, and perhaps find a way to bring that together so that there is even greater opportunity for cohesion. So there's, it's no need to respond. I really, I'd love it. And I think it's a great idea. And we just encourage you to even dig deeper into that connectivity in community and across community. I think one of the things that would be fabulous is, you know, for life sciences and for our residents of Bell Haven to feel and be as connected as possible. And this looks like One Avenue, which would be, which would be wonderful. We've had this conversation before about another project of yours, and I know your answer, Mr. Tarleton. This is around the diesel generator and the specifics of the types of work that is done there and the need for specific types of energy. I just wish that you continue to look at the innovation that continues to happen in those spaces. And, you know, if in any way, when, when this thing is, is coming up for approval, that that innovation allows for something other than diesel generator, we've had projects approved nearby, the residential projects, but they don't have a diesel generator. We've got the community center without a diesel generator. I just, I'm hopeful that, you know, you've got such great amenities that are relative to our greenhouse gas goals. That diesel generator on all these projects just feels like a really unfortunate pimple on a really wonderful project. So that comment. Then two others, on the Paseos, I appreciate Commissioner Doe's comments. And this is for Commissioner Smith. This is the connectivity question. And the activation question. Because, and so the one part that makes a lot of sense is the connectivity that we've talked to, which is the Paseos going out to Bayfront. And I think that's fabulous to give access out that way. But that whole western side of the project, the Facebook side of that project, nobody's, no member of the public gets access to that Paseo. Nobody's, no member of the public gets access to that Paseo from anywhere in that Facebook project. If they're coming from the other side, they got to come from Bayfront or they've got to come down at O'Brien, I believe. In order to be able to get in there, because the rest of it is all private, essentially fenced off Facebook access. I've got to have my card keyed to be able to get in there. And so I wonder how you think and we should think about activation of that site. And at various hours of the day, that's a big, long stretch of wonderful space. But will it have a lot of people and a lot of vibrancy? And what does that mean for lighting and for use in the community and, and feeling safe? If I'm an off-hours member of the community that wants to bike through there, how have we thought about that? And then my other question is if you could answer it the same way from refreshing us on the map and the connectivity map is. What is that, that map through the rest of life sciences, O'Brien? And back down into the residences, both in Bell Haven and East Palo Alto. And how, how are we making sure that that connectivity happens there as well? So those are my questions. If I can, I guess maybe I'll ask Mr. Smith first and then Mr. Charlton, if you wanted to add in.
Right. I think the coordination between projects in the area is certainly an ongoing. Ongoing issue and, and thing that we're considering. The connections, so as I mentioned, I'm not sure if I could. Share my screen here just so that we're making sure we're all talking about the same information. Let me see.
I appreciate you seeking to do that. I think that'd be really helpful. Good. Yes, we can see it. Yeah.
Great. So this is, this is the project. Can you see my cursor?
Yes, small to me, but I can see it. Other commissioners, are you able to track on this right now? I'm seeing head nodding, so I think we're good.
So this is the project site, and this is the portion of the Paseo that would run along. It's envisioned to be completely located on the Willow Village site as of now. You can see that there's a connection up here. And I mentioned earlier, the Dumbarton Real Corridor kind of goes down the whole length of this area. Are you referring to this section of the Paseo?
Yeah, you're in the right spot. So I appreciate that connection, but right where your cursor is, it's the non-connected parts is where everybody lives. Right? Is, is down those other directions. The white space is East Palo Alto, and then that gray space that is the rest of Bell Haven and Menlo Park. I want to know how we're connecting into those. Communities so that it's easy for me to hop my bike and to get my scooter and to walk my dog along there.
Right. So there are, there are a number of projects that are, that are proposed throughout the life sciences district. And each of those would be. You know, there's, there's an agreement and I, I am a little bit out of. A little bit out of the loop, maybe. John might be more versed in this than I am, but there is a plan for all of O'Brien Drive to provide the. The meandering pathways and connections throughout the entire, the entire length here. And so eventually there would be other connections and, and there's a lot of, there's deferred frontage improvement agreements. And, and the city is partnering with applicants in this area on the, the eventual development of all of that open space along these project frontages. So I think the link could potentially come in, in that aspect of it. Connections to East Palo Alto are primarily going to be, you know, from O'Brien Drive. I think that, you know, potentially there could be an opportunity with some of the projects, some of the properties that are located here. Along the, the LS, the areas where it's not the bonus level development. And you know, I'm speaking hypothetically, I don't have any instance that I could point to where this could happen. But this open space could be provided potentially with a connection from East Palo Alto residences. In this area through a project site as part of its open space. And then provide the sidewalk connections, bike lanes, eventual connections that would lead up into the, the Paseos elsewhere in the district.
Thank you. Mr. Charlton, yeah, please, you were patient. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And thank you for the opportunity to address both your question and a prior question, question or statement from Commissioner Doe. We're in the process of a public-private partnership with the city, working with the Public Works Department. To create the first continuous sidewalk from O'Brien, from, excuse me, University Avenue to Willow. Along the south side of O'Brien Drive. We too are concerned with employees and residents wandering through the streets. And, and we hope to get underway on that project soon. It's been in the works now for, for some time now. In terms of connectivity, we are taking a holistic approach. But of course, we will only be able to deliver. You know, pieces as we, as we go through our development. With the exception of the public-private partnership where we're going to be able to do this continuous sidewalk from University to Willow. The concept, you, you probably saw, and I think a few of you commented on. In Susan Eschweiler's presentation, that there is both a sidewalk adjacent to the right of way. Or adjacent to the vehicular traffic and a bike lane, and then a separate meandering sidewalk. We have, we're proposing the same approach on O'Brien Drive, which is the main connector throughout that neighborhood. On the south side of O'Brien, we will have a sidewalk that is adjacent to vehicular traffic. On the north side, we will have a meandering sidewalk that is physically separated from traffic. And that is, you know, all part of a larger scope. We are in discussions with the city about making our own contribution to the connection. To the neighborhood that's south of the, of the wall there. And as planning staff has pointed out, there are a number of other projects. One of which is in the beginning stages of application to the city that might also provide a connection point.
That's super helpful. I just, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of what, what you're talking about on that east-west connectivity. I think that'll be great along O'Brien. And you know, we talked about the connectivity essentially for half of the north-south. I'll just put a pin in the point that both of, that you just made there at the end of it, that Mr. Smith did as well. Look, the, the history of that space in our community was designed to wall off a whole bunch of people. To not have access to the rest of that space. And that's why it's really complicated to be able to do those connectivity pieces on this. You know, that was done and it was done for a whole lot of reasons and they were wrong and discriminatory. And so I love that we're building all these projects here. But if we don't redress that access north-south, that looks and feels as beautiful as what you just talked about east-west, as a community, we will have failed. And this is not on you, Mr. Charlton, your project. And I appreciate you saying, looking at the properties you control and to be able to make that access happen. But that feels really important. Or the grocery store in Willow Village that is supposed to be a community amenity that folks can get to easily. But in fact, they really can't, then doesn't become a community amenity. It becomes a benefit to wealthier people that live nearby, immediately nearby. So I just, I want to stress that point about the Paseos and the connectivity. And reinforce that I, I just, I really appreciate what you just said, how you all have been so thoughtful about that space. And whatever role you can play in working with the city to open up those other corridors so they can link in to residents. Would be hugely important. So thank you for that part of the conversation. I want to put a pin in. Ms. Jones is, Pam Jones' public comment about the BMR. You know, we, we continue. To just not succeed at this. You know, we, I think Commissioner Barnes did a nice job of talking about, I think, the trade-off or the bargain about community amenities. And also about how we're trying to do low market rate housing. But, but the, the outcome is that, as Ms. Jones said, fundamentally, people are leaving. They can't afford to live here. And people lived here for a long time, so we're failing. And so I, I just, I think these and other projects need to look at whatever they can do to boost BMR, because we just have to do this all over the place. So I wanted to put a pin in that. And then back on community amenities, I just appreciate Commissioner Harris and the, the comment with Mr. Barnes. I agree. Far better, and I'm really excited to see the updated list of community amenities. One that is deeply connected to the community that it continues to be most impacted. And that I hope we can make that connection, this project and others, and really excited to see that coming. Because I think, and I'm hopeful that that will solve this conundrum. I think there's even a bigger problem now. It's one thing when inflation is sitting there below 1%. But if we're going to sit here and inflation is like 6, 7, 8%, and then we're going to sit on this money for a couple of years before we use it. We fundamentally took a million dollars and then we threw away $120,000 of it. And so I think that just makes it more pressing in this mix. And so then this gets me to my last point, which is the parking and transportation. I really appreciate everything you said, Mr. Charlton. And I know that what you've said is that for your project, you've focused on the last 40 years of experience. And what needs to work for your project. As a, as a city, we have to have what works for the full community and the impacts are at large. As many of the, our fellow commissioners have said tonight, continue to be huge. And so I continue to be a fan of really driving down the parking. I think it can be done. I think it can successfully be done with combinations of carrots and sticks and cross parking in that mix. And I also am super interested, as you talked about your frustration with the community amenities of doing built projects. But actually, I think your sweet spot is not necessarily building stuff. Your sweet spot might actually be in moving people around. And so I wonder, all those buses that you're running and shuttles. I, and this is, we don't need to, because it's 15 minutes till we have to leave. But wherever they're empty, if they're dropping folks off from Caltrain. At your sites, and then they go back to the next Caltrain, I'm guessing that in the morning, they're pretty empty going one way. Well, what would it look like if you, or if you and everybody else who is running a private bus service in Bell Haven. Actually put together a private public bus service. That means tested and gave bus passes to any resident in that community that could actually reverse commute on your bus system. What about trying to build something like that? Because you talked about wanting to partner and play your part with the city for the public transportation that we need to have. This is our moment. We've got your projects, Willow Village. We've got all the ones that are going to happen downtown. If we don't get this solved now, we're going to fail and we're going to get run over as a community. And I just, I really just wish that, that you and other leaders that are building these projects. Would really step up and work together and, and find creative ways to help shore up and create the type of system. And it's with the frequency question that Commissioner Riggs started with at the beginning, right? A, a system that works for people that could actually get them to use something other than their car, including and specifically the residents. I think there's a pathway there. You're much smarter than I am about it. I just, I, I wish for you in this project. Or for that future to just lean in even more with our community to make it happen. We're not going to build our way out of this. I am not in favor of another access road. That goes to the expressway. I imagine it can't even be built because of what's between it, which is a whole lot of protected wetland area. Because the solution set here is going to be getting less stuff coming through what we have, not creating more. More lanes to just fill up with more cars in that mix. So my biggest one is, I, I really want to see the parking reduced on this by a lot more. I really think we can do this. I think you would be a leader, not only for this moment, but for the future. And we'll look back on it and feel tremendous about the project. So I just want to put a pin in that. I think those are my comments on the project. Overall, I just wanted, from my standpoint, just thank you for your commitment to our community. For the potential that you can continue to play that leading role for the community we have right now. The specific impacts especially continue to be hammered on our residents in Bell Haven. And, and finding solutions that can work for them while still maximizing the, as you rightly pointed out, the benefit you're already giving our community. Other commissioner comments before we close this public hearing tonight. All right, seeing none before I close it, I'll turn to you, Mr. Smith. Any clarifying questions or do you need any further information from us?
No, I've taken a lot of great notes. Appreciate all the feedback and we will move forward from here.
All right. Well, with that, I really want to thank Mr. Charlton, Ms. Eschweiler, Mr. Hutter, the whole team. Mr. Smith and your staff for the staff report and for the background information to help us out as commissioners tonight for this. Portion of the evening. And with that, I will close this item on our agenda and thank you. So with that. I believe, now going back to my agenda, apologies. We've now closed items G and H, and so that moves us to Ms. Sandmeyer. Am I correct?
Yes. Good evening again. So the next meeting, the next regular meeting is scheduled in a week on May 9. There's still some moving parts where we're figuring out. On that meeting, but we will be, staff will be in touch in the next couple of days. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions from commissioners? Ms. Sandmeyer, I have one. We did end a planning commission meeting, I believe it was in the beginning of March. Where we said we were going to actually look at this question of LOS again. I was not around for the following meeting, and so I don't know if that actually happened. I didn't see it on the agenda. And I wondered then, what is the follow-up to that item as a. Because there had been interest from commissioners at looking at LOS. So I'm just following up and asking, where do we stand on that follow-up?
Well, I mean, I think it's more of a policy issue for the city council. Since it's. There's some policies in the general plan, and then there's the transportation impact analysis guidelines that were. Adopted by the city council. So. I'm not sure.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure exactly what follow-up you were looking for.
I had a note that there had been a request to have a follow-up session looking at LOS. And how we should get more information about how it's used, how it's not used, as we looked at EIRs when they came. So my understanding was we were going to get some informational session about that. I was not the commissioner that asked for it, so perhaps if this is. So I'll just leave it at that. But for right now, there is not any planned additional follow-up. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, terrific. So thank you very much. All right. With that, I will close that and bring our meeting to a close with a thank you to staff. Really appreciate all your help with a welcome to Commissioners Doe and Thomas. Glad that you are here, looking forward to working with you, and we will see you all in a week.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for an excellent meeting.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Thanks, everyone. Good night.